Good evening. I want to call the meeting to order for the Oxford City Council for October 21st, 2025. Madam Clerk, may we have the roll call and post in the agenda, please?
Councilmember Perlo. Councilwoman Perez.
Here.
Councilwoman Rodriguez.
Here.
Councilmember Starr.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Teran.
Here.
The agenda for this meeting was posted in the kiosk at City Hall, the Oxford Public Library, the city administrative offices, and on the city's website on Thursday, October 9th, and the amended agenda on Thursday, October 16th.
Thank you very much. I believe Councilwoman Basua will be joining us shortly. Oh, did you have something?
I'm sorry, Mayor Pro Tem and Councilwoman Basua, I believe, is joining us virtually.
Okay, while Councilwoman Basua is getting queued up there, I will mention that the mayor will not be joining us this evening as he is unavailable.
And Councilwoman Basua? Hi.
Here.
Thank you, and I believe Mr. City Attorney, Madam Clerk, we have a statement from Councilwoman Basua who is joining us virtually this evening.
Yes, first of all, I just want to disclose that my son, my adult son, 22-year-old, is in the house with me. I'm currently at my home, and my husband, who should be coming home shortly from work. So I just want to make sure that I disclose that. And also, Mayor Pro Tem and my counsel, fellow council members, I am requesting to participate remotely in today's meeting under Government Code Section 54953 due to an emergency circumstance. I am currently suffering from a physical injury that prevents me from attending the meeting in person.
Mayor, may I ask a question? Or Mayor Pro Tem?
Yes.
City Attorney, we need to make sure that she, that Councilmember Basua explains no one will be joining her in a closed session, correct?
She needs to disclose if there is somebody in the room with her who is over 18. It's not prohibited. She has to disclose it.
Even in closed session?
Oh, closed session, yeah, so that part of it, no, she won't be having people with her in closed session.
That's the only point I was trying to...
We will clarify that when we get into closed session.
Thank you, Councilwoman Basua.
Thank you, Councilwoman Perlo, and thank you, Councilwoman. Mr. City Attorney, I believe we have an action as a council for the request from Councilwoman Basua. Is that correct?
Correct. An affirmative vote is required to permit this under the emergency exception.
Thank you very much. I'll push this to the council then. Councilwoman Basua has stated under an emergency circumstance, she's requested to attend this meeting virtually. What's the pleasure of the council?
I think we should grant it, so I'll make that motion that she be allowed to participate.
Okay.
I'll second that.
We have a motion by Councilmember Starr and a second by Councilwoman Rodriguez. Madam Clerk, may we have the vote?
Councilmember Perlo.
Yes.
Councilwoman Perez.
Yes.
Councilwoman Rodriguez.
Yes.
Councilmember Starr.
Yes.
Councilwoman Basua.
Yes.
And Mayor, and Mayor Pro Tem.
Yes.
And that motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you all very much. Okay, so moving on to our closed session here, prior to closed session, we will take public comments on the closed session agenda. Can the city attorney provide a statement prior to closed session?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. The city council will recess to a closed session pursuant to Government Code Section 54957 subdivision A to consult with Jason Benitez, police chief, regarding a threat to public services or facilities.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers for public comments prior to closed session?
And Mayor Pro Tem and council members, we do not have any public speakers in person or virtually for closed session. Thank you.
Thank you very much. City council will recess to a closed session, and at 5 o'clock PM, we'll begin with two appointment items followed by the regular meeting.
Okay. City Council has just emerged from closed session and will ask the city attorney for any announcements to make.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. There are no announcements out of closed session this evening.
Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is appointment item D1, City Manager Department. Subject, the Oxnard Convention and Visitors Bureau, OCVB, annual report. Recommendation that the city council receive the OCVB fiscal year 2425 annual report. And I believe this is a live presentation by Oxnard Convention and Visitors Bureau President and CEO Brittany Hendricks. And there she is.
Hi. Good evening, Mayor Protem, Oxnard City Council and city staff. My name is Brittany Hendricks. I'm the President and CEO with Oxnard Convention and Visitors Bureau, also known as Visit Oxnard. I've had the pleasure of working at Visit Oxnard since 2018. And we do have a presentation. There it is. Okay, let's see if I can get these slides going. Here we go. Here from our Board of Directors is our Board Chair, Steve Banger, plus Board Director Mark Spellman. Also, our city-appointed Board Directors, Gabe Turan and Ashley Golden. And here with me from the Visit Oxnard team is our Business Development and Operations Manager, Michelle Flippo, Digital and Multicultural Marketing Manager, Daniel Carrera, and Marketing and Office Coordinator, Nino Blunt. Together with our Public Relations Contractor, Elizabeth Malgoza. We're a very small but mighty and dedicated team. We have passion for the city we live and work in and are extremely honored to share the story of Oxnard to potential and future visitors that in turn spend money in our community improving our residents' quality of life. The Visit Oxnard team holds membership and seats on boards and committees throughout our county, state... The Visit Oxnard team holds membership and seats on boards and committees throughout our county, state, and nation. We have a seat at the table in important industry conversations. And we can share all the great things Oxnard has to offer to our industry peers. Visit Oxnard is guided by an industry-led Board of Directors, including Mayor Protem Turan and Assistant City Manager Ashley Golden. We have a cross-section of industry leaders that represent hoteliers and tourism-serving businesses throughout Oxnard. What we do, Visit Oxnard, is the community marketing agency committed to telling the city's integrated brand story, allowing for strength in partnerships, driving new revenue, and enhancing Oxnard's overall vibrancy through powerful storytelling that unites neighborhoods, businesses, and individual voice to bring our destination to life and giving potential travelers the reason to visit Oxnard. Visit Oxnard models its tactics in line with industry standards, most closely mirroring the strategy set forth by Visit California. Envision the consumer journey from destination awareness to an actualized travel booking as a top-down funnel. As a destination marketing organization, our goal is to drive tourism at the higher funnel inspiration layer, keeping Oxnard top of mind among familiar travelers while inspiring consideration from new active travel intenders. Engagement, KPIs like impressions, click-through rates, sessions, time on site, all metrics listed in our annual report, all feed into this awareness funnel. This higher funnel drives interest, which feeds into the lower transaction funnel or conversion layer, which is what drives destination-specific bookings. Our mission is to drive tourism and overnight visitation by building awareness of Oxnard, improving the perception of Oxnard to residents and visitors, growing our audience. These are high-funnel, top-layer activities that inspire the transaction, and we do this through our owned, earned, and paid media, as well as trade show attendance and destination stewardship. I'll be walking through these items over the course of our report. Each year, our organization produces a forward-looking annual marketing plan that is our guiding star for our year ahead. The strategic framework within this plan outlines industry data detailing the travel landscape and provides a roadmap for navigating perceived challenges and how to capitalize on opportunities. Most importantly, the plan outlines the framework and approach OCVB will take to retain market share and attract visitors to Oxnard. Visit Oxnard works with and actively promotes eight hotel partners with 1,282 rooms. Fiscal year 2425 occupancy averaged 67.9%. An average daily rate was $183.43, the highest in Ventura County. OCVB's owned media consists of our website, social channels, and email marketing. VisitOxnard.com is the central hub for our brand messaging and travel inspiration, serving as the anchor for all of OCVB's placed media. We continue to optimize existing web content and create new content too, to tell the story of Oxnard and encourage a deeper dive into our destination offerings, always with referral links to Oxnard's hospitality businesses. Due to the rise of AI search and increase in cost per impression on paid media, we did see a decrease in website traffic year over year. However, qualitative engagement is up with a 17% uptick in pages per session to 1.95 and a 237% increase in session duration to 2 minutes and 18 seconds per page. This means that the traffic coming to the OCVB website is more highly engaged, which is believed to be a result of improved audience targeting and content updates that have been made throughout the year. The top 10 geographic referrals to VisitOxnard.com during fiscal year 2425 were Los Angeles, Oxnard, San Jose, Dallas, Ventura, San Diego, Thousand Oaks, Mexico, Tijuana Region, Phoenix, the Inland Empire, and Camarillo. An owned feature on the Visit Oxnard website, residents and visitors can check our live cam from Channel Islands Harbor to see whether the marine layer has burned off, making our site a go-to resource for those looking to enjoy outdoor recreation. We have a robust followership of over 82,000 across Facebook, Instagram, Twitter, YouTube, Spotify, Pinterest, LinkedIn, and TikTok. The OCVB general tourism e-newsletter has over 14,000 e-subscribers with up to a 56% average open rate. The industry average is only 15.7%. This e-newsletter circulated monthly to drive awareness to Oxnard's latest hospitality news, seasonal articles, and tourism business offerings. Now let's walk through our earned media, which consists of print, online, radio, and broadcast coverage earned via relationships with media, attendance to media events, and press release distribution, plus awards and honors earned on behalf of the Oxnard community. OCVB's robust public relations strategy has since July 1st, 2024, resulted in earned coverage with top outlets including cron.com, cntraveler.com, kclu.com, laparent.com, latimes.com, nbclosangeles.com, Pacific Coast Business Times, Paper City Magazine, Santa Clarita Valley Signal, Texas Lifestyle Magazine, VC Reporter, vstar.com, visitcalifornia.com, and more. Additional print coverage has included placements in SoCal Life Magazine and Sunset Magazine with 25,000 and 160,000 circulation respectively. Visit Oxnard distributed six formal press releases throughout the year, which supplemented direct communications regarding newsworthy stories, events, seasonal happenings, and more. OCVB promoted Oxnard in broadcast and radio interviews, generating coverage on ABC 10 News San Diego, KTLA 5 News, KEYT News, Spectrum News, The Mambo in the Morning Show, The Super Cowboy Show, and more. Oxnard has amassed some impressive accolades this past year, including a Platinum Video Award for Short-Form Video for Visit Oxnard's A Beat Apart campaign, a Sunset Magazine Travel Award for What to Do for the Oxnard Taco Trail, and recognition of Alacoa Beach Park as the number one best beach in California for the third year in a row by USA Today's 10 Best Readers' Choice Awards. These are a little slow to get through, sorry. Okay, and now a brief overview of our paid media strategy, inspiring travelers via premium placements across top outlets and leveraged co-ops and via digital display ads. Today's media landscape is highly fractured. To keep up with the ever-evolving landscape of digital media and all the ways someone consumes information, Visit Oxnard works with a media partner who is adept at assisting us to navigate this complex, granular environment with a media strategy that successfully communicates our brand message to our target consumer. Here you can see examples of how our banner ads show up across devices. And our brand ads ran in multiple formats with creative swap to be timely for seasonal offerings. Our always-on, omnichannel approach includes distribution via Google Search Engine Marketing, Google Video Distribution, Google Prospecting and Responsive Display, meta-cost per click and remarketing, and ads served on LinkedIn for group business. Seasonal ads alone garnered 10.1 million brand impressions and 154,000 brand engagements, with our always-on ads garnering tens of millions more impressions across a variety of channels. Additionally, OCVB ran sponsored editorial and display campaigns across a number of outlets, including The Fader, Stereogum, Sunset Magazine, American Songwriter, Small Market Meetings, San Diego Magazine, Travel Guide to California, LA Parent, Mommy Poppins, and dedicated email marketing campaigns with Visit California, CalSAE, North Star Meetings Group, CMCA, and more. And OCVB ran a three-month Expedia campaign promoting Oxnard hotels with a 6.8% return on ad sales. That means for every ad dollar spent, OCVB saw approximately seven in return with 1.5 million impressions, over 1,000 clicks, and almost 1,000 room nights booked. OCVB ran print ads in Dreamscape, in VC Reporter, SoCal Life Magazine, San Diego Magazine, Sunset Magazine, California Travel Guide, and The Hotel Guide. In conjunction with paid print ads, OCVB also earned a placement for Oxnard as the back cover feature for Adventure Sports Journal. And Visit, uh, let me see. Back one. Okay, Visit Oxnard is greatly involved in industry relations to leverage opportunities for co-op programming. Our co-op projects have been in partnership with Ventura County Lodging Association, Central Coast Tourism Council, and Visit California in publications like the California Central Coast Map, California Road Trips Guide, and Visit California Visitor Magazine, all with global reach. And Visit Oxnard is the liaison between the city of Oxnard and the collection on LED billboard ad space at the collection. Visit Oxnard also contracts with Channel Islands Harbor and Clear Channel on static billboard space off Highway 101. So you can see here some of our ads. Visit Oxnard has a robust meetings and trade show calendar, putting us in front of thousands of leisure and business travelers. OCVB produces a meeting and events planning guide that details our hotel meeting spaces and off-site venues, encouraging meeting planners to book group events in our destination and extend their stay, driving additional revenue to our hospitality businesses and community. OCVB attended 12 group and leisure trade shows in fiscal year 2425, making connections with thousands of potential visitors and meeting planners. OCVB held appointments and promoted Oxnard at the following: Meetings Live West, Destinations California, Small Market Meetings, Small and Boutique Meetings, Connect West, NTA Travel Exchange, CalSAE Seasonal Spectacular, Bridal and Wedding Expo, National Association of Music Merchants Show, Pacific Sports Fishing Show, Connect Marketplace, and Destination West. When I say OCVB, I mean Michelle Flippo attended all of these. I got one on there. Okay. OCVB attends group and leisure trade shows to connect with target segments that align with Oxnard's hotel offerings and generate business from qualified meeting planners and groups looking to book programs in Southern California and the Central Coast. OCVB accepted $1.5 million in ARPA funds to oversee destination marketing and management projects between fiscal years 2021 to 2022 and 2022 to 2023. Although the majority of these projects have concluded, OCVB continues to support the city with some ongoing projects. OCVB manages a promotional website at filmOxnard.com for Oxnard's film coordination and liaison efforts to attract major productions to Oxnard and drive economic activity. Here, location managers will find film application resources, information on past productions filmed in Oxnard, and listings for locations, base camps, parking, vendors, and more. And you may have seen the beautiful signage installed around Oxnard as part of Oxnard's citywide wayfinding system. Visit Oxnard collaborated with Mayor MacArthur to create a communications piece for residents and visitors to celebrate the completion of Phase One of the project, and this will go live on November 5th. This past summer, Oxnard hosted its 19th Dallas Cowboys Training Camp at River Ridge Playing Fields. In July, Visit Oxnard hosted its fourth annual Oxnard Fan Night in partnership with the collection, featuring performances and autograph signings by the Dallas Cowboys Cheerleaders, an appearance by Cowboys mascot Rowdy, and autograph signings by Cowboys legend and Super Bowl champion Charles Haley and standout cornerback Orlando Scandrick. The Cowboys included Oxnard Fan Night on their official training camp schedule and Netflix docu-series America's Sweethearts filmed at the event. And because the Cowboys are a global name and a huge draw for interest in tourism to Oxnard, OCVB invests in a robust marketing plan to grow its audience with this devoted fan base. OCVB partnered with the Cowboys in developing a comprehensive marketing plan to drive awareness and attendance from local drive markets and in key out-of-state markets alike, with the Cowboys developing creative assets on our behalf. Promotional tactics included live broadcast interviews on KTLA, KEYT, NBC's California Live, and Spectrum News, radio interviews on Q959 FM, and Fox Sports Radio, outdoor advertising along Highway 101, targeted digital display and search engine marketing ads, print ads in the VC Reporter, sponsored editorial with LA Parent and DFW Child, a robust social media calendar with supportive ad spend, Dallas Cowboys, and Visit Oxnard co-branded promo merch, a training camp landing page at VisitOxnard.com, daily VIP pass giveaways, and onsite activations. And if you haven't seen it, our brand new, our new brand platform launched earlier this year, A Beat Apart is live across our channels, celebrating Oxnard's unique rhythm and character. And this campaign is supported by the Oxmarks the Spot Extension, spotlighting hidden gems and local experiences. I don't think the video is gonna work today. Okay, we'll skip it, but it is on our YouTube channels. There are many exciting things on the horizon for Oxnard, including three new hotel properties coming online in the next one, two, three years, which will increase available hotel room inventory by 424 new rooms. In the new calendar year, we are planning a collaborative campaign with internationally acclaimed Oxnard-based producer of craft spirits, Sesbee Creek Distillery. Check out their new tasting room. And in spring 2028, Carl's will be opening at the Fisherman's Wharf location, a definite demand driver for our community, and will be working hand-in-hand with Axel and his team. Visit Oxnard also has some large internal project undertakings, like a website rebuild, operational updates, and the launch of our content on Visit California's STAR program, connecting travel advisors to a network of sellers worldwide. And hot off the presses is our fiscal year 2526 marketing plan. In this document, we detail our plans to navigate market challenges, including a forecasted softening in consumer demand with visitation growth plateauing industry-wide and increased competition for travel-related spending from nearby destinations. We also discuss our dedication as an organization to stewardship of economic development in support of attracting new businesses aimed at enhancing the hospitality sector and laying a sustainable foundation for growth. a sustainable foundation for growth. And of course, we outline the tactics and plans we have in place to accomplish our mission. Our view is that each consumer has a decision point in their journey to the transaction. In a competitive landscape where other destinations have growing budgets and are able to more effectively influence the consumer before they reach the transaction level, to retain market share, we need to insert ourselves in the conversation to effectively persuade visitation and drive conversions. I hope tonight's presentation has provided a glimpse into how Visit Oxnard is driving awareness of Oxnard, improving the perception of Oxnard to both residents and visitors, and growing our audience. Thank you, Mayor Protem and Oxnard City Council. Michelle, Daniel, Nino, Steve, and I are available for any questions that you might have.
Thank you very much, Ms. Hendricks. Much appreciated. Oh. Do we have questions from councilmembers at this point? Councilwoman Perez.
Thank you so much, Brittany, to you and your team for just this awesome presentation. I think as I often think about things, I also think about marketing and reach as well, and increasing dollars locally. So I really appreciate the background on the purpose of generating economic benefits and promoting the area and attracting more visitors, but also looking at the brand promise rooted in diversity of cultural heritage, a deep connection to musical soul, offering real value for families, adventurers, and travelers alike, and really just wanted to see if there is an opportunity to also continue, as you mentioned, looking forward, looking ahead, at really understanding and reflecting what the community needs are here, and including additional histories that are reflective of Oxnard in addition to athletics, community service, you know, the small businesses that operate in this area, especially as we think about some of the impacts to our local economy, and really wanting to also amplify a platform for locals and really having that rooted in community here.
Yes, absolutely. So we really are anchored in driving tourism and bringing people here, but a huge part of that is telling the community's story and communicating our culture. And we actually, where's Daniel? Daniel's position is specifically dedicated to not only the digital marketing aspect of what our organization does, but he is the multicultural marketing person as well. He's out in the community, attending events. He was actually just at Pantone Festival, and he was the judge, I think, for the Katrine and Katrina competition. So it's super important to us. We know it's important to the residents, and we definitely look forward to continuing to do that.
Great. Yeah, I think what comes to mind for me is that oftentimes people will pick up a magazine or see your brochure, and really also want to see themselves reflected, and wanting to ensure that as well. So thank you for all the work that you do, and appreciate you and your team for the time and effort.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Additional questions? Councilwoman Rodriguez.
Well, it's a question, just for clarification. Excellent job. I really appreciate everything you all are doing to get Oxnard on the map. And the metrics for the website, I think I heard you say that the metrics went down a little bit in terms of page views because of AI, but I see 878 million. You meant 878,000?
Yes.
It's okay?
Thousand.
Just wanted to make sure. Still amazing, and I just think this is, this is great work happening throughout Oxnard. And feel free to invite us to your events, and we'll try to make as much as we possibly can.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Star.
Yes, I think one of the, I guess one tribute here is that the fact that the effective lodging businesses are 100% behind this and willing to pay a 2% assessment on their revenues says a lot. They didn't have to do that, but the fact that you've got unanimous support from those hotels, it's money out of their pockets, they see value. So if people are questioning, and I often, I understand why people might question the value of these sorts of programs, but the fact that the people who are paying the bills are in favor of it and not us says a lot. I do have a question. I have, I'm a member of the Automobile Club of Southern California. I know they've got a magazine I get every month. I think it's called Westways Magazine. And I don't know if you've had any experience with them. I know that I've been to a couple of day trips based on some of the articles they've written over time, but I don't know if you've had any experience with that magazine and whether it's something even useful.
Yes, actually Jerry Harris, who was their former sales rep for our area, is a dear friend, and they have a new sales rep, her name's Coy, and I was just with her two weeks ago, and we're talking about doing another Westways article with them. We have done Westways articles in the past, and I know that is a magazine that is very influential in Southern California. So thank you for that feedback.
We did Oxnard crossword puzzle.
We did. We did an Oxnard crossword puzzle in one of their publications last year.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember. Councilwoman Prellio.
Thank you for the presentation. I appreciate the comments from the councilmembers. I don't travel to Oxnard. I live in Oxnard, but I'll share, I attended a Sterling event at the PAC, and it was well-attended. And I came across multiple people that said they saw the ads for Sterling in the VC Reporter and other spots, and that drove them to Oxnard. They were astounded by the quality of sound in that building. So I just wanted to share that. It was, was a good, it was loud, but it was really a good concert. Thank you.
Who did you go see? Who'd you see?
Drawing like 1972, is he 74 years old?
I think, I think the show is John Waits.
That's it. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Can you, can you name two songs from the concert?
How about "Missing You"?
Thank you. And I thank you for bailing me out there, so.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilwoman Basui, did you have any questions or comments as we wrap up this item? Okay, no? Well, thank you all very much. Really appreciate the update here and all the work you're doing. I have the privilege of sitting on the board alongside your team and other, I see other board members here, including Ms. Golden, and I am astounded by the amount of intentional work and thought that goes into what's happening here. The point I want to make was touched upon a little bit in referencing Daniel's work. It was great to see, I think it was at our last meeting, when we looked at metrics for some of the social media engagement on, on some of the posts and content from Visit Oxnard, and the Cowboys always do amazingly, you know, in social media views and clicks and follow-throughs, but it was great to see that a post about lowriders in the city of Oxnard even surpassed the Cowboys' metrics. And to me, that is speaking to how the, the view of the cultural aspect behind the city of Oxnard and what truly speaks to the people who live here, who grew up here and maybe moved elsewhere, are those who want to come here and visit. That is absolutely something that needs to be reflected in who we are and what we do, and how you can come here and have fun and see what we really do here in Oxnard. So I wanted to commend you for taking that move on that, and I think the, the numbers and the data show that that was truly well-received by those who saw the post. So thank you for that. Mr. City Manager, do you have something else?
Yeah, I just, please, if I can make a comment, because I really want to thank this team for the extraordinary amount of work that they can produce with such a small team, but they are so passionate and dedicated. All cities need to do this. You, you really need to earn your tourism, and we don't have, like, you know, the rock at Yosemite, we don't have the Eiffel Tower, we don't have that kind of inherent attraction, but even those communities have to do the work to earn the tourism. In many cities, you will have an organization like this, and the hoteliers and the restaurateurs often will be members and paying members because they desperately need this level of work. But I will tell you, having worked in two bigger cities that have their own visitors and, and convention bureaus, I've never seen an organization crank out this level of work with this, this, the, just the quality of it is so extraordinary. And while it is, it can feel like this is a feel-good annual update, understand that the more that they are successful, the more hotel tax we get, and the more restaurant tax we get, and that all goes into our basic programs like public safety and programs for youth and seniors. So there is a clear connection. This is not just a feel-good thing, even though they make it feel so good, but it is, it is exceedingly important work that needs to be done for every city, and we are just fortunate to have this organization to partner with. So I really want to thank you for the really, really hard work and the amount of productivity that you can create each year. It is, it is truly astounding. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. And we have one last comment by Councilwoman Prellio.
I appreciate the city manager making that comment specifically about work, but I can't, when he made that comment, I can't let this pass. You impressed me tremendously that you read and you spoke, and I didn't take, see you one time take a drink of water. That, frankly, from having to do this, that is extremely impressive. Congratulations to you.
Thank you.
You have a very, that's a skill. That is a skill.
Was that a comment to the city manager who's drinking his water?
Thank you, Councilmember.
If I can make just one more comment. We truly appreciate the comments that you've all made tonight. It means the world to us, and I'm very grateful to have such a passionate team that supports the work that we do, and we really do love this community, so thank you.
And we appreciate the support from the city. As she said, I travel to a lot of trade shows and talking with other counterparts that, you know, dread their city council when they have to give their report, you know, because it's such a fight, and even they're bored. And every time I go to one of those, I'm like, I love my board, I love my city, and so it makes my job a whole lot easier.
Great. Thank you all very much. Appreciate your update on this. Okay, so we're gonna, oh, excuse me, Madam Clerk, do we have comments on this particular item?
Mayor Protem and councilmembers, we do not have any public speakers in person or virtually for this item. Thank you.
Thank you very much. If there are no additional speakers, this is a receivable file, so no actions required. We'll move on to the next agenda item. Item D2 for the Housing Department, subject approval of the Downtown Oxnard Improvement Association Annual Work Plan and Budget for Fiscal Year 2526. Community Relations Commission, oh, excuse me, that's a typo there. Recommendation that the City Council approve the Downtown Oxnard Improvement Association Annual Work Plan and Budget for Fiscal Year 2526. This is a live presentation by Downtown Oxnard Improvement Association Executive Director, Abel Ramirez Magaña.
Well, a very good evening to Mayor Protem, members of the council, and our city leadership. Do appreciate this opportunity to come before you and to summarize our, our annual work plan and budget. I want to start out actually by thanking staff, our partners in Housing and Economic Development, Brenda Lopez and Jasmine McGinty, for putting together a very, very thorough staff report. I think you've got a number of attachments there, and the efforts to consolidate all the various reports that we are, that we are obligated to bring before you and happy to bring before you over the course of the year and summarize that for you. I also want to acknowledge our partners here at Visit Oxnard, the, we work very closely, collaborate all the time, they're active members of our District Identity and Placemaking Committee, and always a tough act to follow, but also, like, we just segue right into this because we are, we are integrally involved in partnership with them. My leadership team here too, also from Downtown Oxnard Improvement Association, my board chair, Angela Whitecomb, and then I have in the audience over here too, a chair of our District Identity Committee, Gary Blum, Mark Spelman, also our treasurer, and, I'm sorry, and also my staff and program coordinator, Sarah Morales. I don't give enough kudos to for all the work that she does, and be sure you'll check out some of her fine work too. This weekend, Saturday, we have our annual Halloween Haunt in the Park from 4:00 to 7:00. So with that, let's see if we can switch over to, how does this work here for our PowerPoint? We, okay. So I'm just gonna take, let's see if I can, very high-level kind of summary of what we do. I'm just want to try to add some context to the staff report. In 2000, the year 2000, this district was formed, we were formed under the California Streets and Highway Code, which is the enabling legislation which allows areas like our downtown here to form a special assessment district. That's where the property owners have gathered together, and they basically said, we want to pay a little bit extra in our property taxes if we can get a little bit of extra back that, that we're not getting over and above what the city provides to every, other areas. The most close way to analogous to it is to look at like mall management companies and like HOAs. It's a pulling together of money so that we can take care of the, in this case, the public space, the common area. So, yeah, the, the district had been also renewed five times since then, most recently just last year, 2024. And at that time, we also took the initiative to expand two blocks north, and that was to encompass an area that we saw as a great deal of need that potentially with the opening of the Navigation Center and a couple of cannabis shops, and just generally, it just made a lot of sense in continuing the downtown district. There are 213 property owners, I think that's important to note. The city is the largest property owner within the district, but there's 212 others that as part of the whole process to get approved for, to have a P-bid, we have to get a majority of those property owners to, to vote for it to be established and to be renewed. We, the Downtown Oxnard Improvement Association, are the management company that takes care of, manages the, the funds that are collected through the assessment and makes sure that, you know, that we are delivering on the promise that we put out there, which was written into our management district plan, and it outlines all the terms of, of what we are going to provide, essentially our prospectus to our owners. In 2021, as part of that reorganization for our, we, we converted to a 501(c)(3), and we established a new contract with the city of Oxnard also to, and that's why part of right, we're here before you today to give you our annual budget and work plan. And I'm sorry, I guess I'm not doing this. Maybe I should hand this to, to keep up the pace here. So this is the map of the district boundary, I just put that out to you to, to show you the diversity and the scope of the district. It is fairly large, it's 32 city blocks, and diverse in its different elements here in the core with Plaza Park where a lot of the activities take place, and in the south we have Heritage Square, and we go all the way out to the Mida District beyond, just up to the railroad tracks there with the Transit Center. So a lot of different diverse, but needs, some more cleaning service needs in some areas, and security and other areas, maybe it's more about marketing and promotions for the activities that take place in those areas. So then we'll move forward to the next slide. So this is the process for the annual, putting together the annual work plan. Much, much like, much like yourselves with the council, we operate in committees at the committee levels to manage our work plan. We have four committees, the Organization Administration Committee, District Identity and Placemaking, Civil Sidewalks, which takes care of issues like cleaning and safety, security of the district, and, and the Land Use Committee, which I'll go into a little bit later down the line, that does not have a budget but does have a role in terms of trying to create the highest and best value for our property owners in terms of their rents and, and utilization of their properties. So we work over the course of a number of committee meetings over several months, and put together this consolidated budget work plan, which was included in your packet. Switch to the next slide, and we'll go through the particular areas. So I'll just call out a few highlights with the, with regards to the Committee's Organization Committee. It oversees the day-to-day staff operations and all the, the elements of running an organization such as insurance, managing the budget on a day-to-day basis, establishing board policies, making sure we're in compliance with Brown Act, and things like those kinds of issues. So, and then, so some of the highlights for our upcoming this year, we will be working And then, so some of the highlights for our upcoming this year, we will be working more diligently to build capacity. The way we do that is through human capital. We try to find a lot of volunteers. So we're doing a lot of outreach to the new expansion area and also just to the community in general to engage new volunteers to help us with all the events and activities that we do to take care of downtown. We also are actively, we want to come before you more frequently, also to give you updates throughout the course of the year about important activities that we are undertaking. We're hosting networking events on a regular basis. We do a thing called Cafe Doia, Cafe Doia, which is bimonthly, which is just a drop in hour. You come down to our office, and we invite business and property owners just to come with their issues or their ideas, their dreams and visions for downtown. We will be doing more updating of our databases, making sure that we also can be able to be in constant communication with our members and survey our property owners on an ongoing basis in terms of how we're doing. We want to get, you know, like quality control with them. And then I do want to highlight this one item of applying for grants and fundraising. I take this opportunity to make an announcement here that we, along with the OPAC and the city of Oxnard, had applied for a state designation as a cultural district, and we were pleased to just receive the notice that we are semifinalists in that. And the state delegation will be coming out here on November 5. We are going to put out all the stops so that we can get that designation. So it doesn't come with a lot of money on the front end, but it is something very special in terms of recognizing all the cultural richness that we have here, and will definitely contribute to our business attraction and attracting more creative uses here in the downtown. So, next slide, let's go into, it's a good segue over here to the District Identity and Placemaking Committee, which I mentioned, Gary Blum oversees. And the job for there is really image enhancement, putting a good face forward to the public about what we do in the downtown and how it's a destination and a place that's very important in our city attractions. So some of the highlights, we are going to continue to build out our downtown office as a visitor center, essentially. So we have already built it out, like, sort of a gallery space there. We've hosted a number of art shows there, and again, a drop-in center for people to come in and find out about the attractions and also about the business development opportunities there. We are also expanding our partnerships with the local colleges. We do have a partnership ongoing with Oxnard College for the graduate banners. Yes, we're very proud of, and brings a lot of color and pride for the downtown. And then we also, we want to be able to convert that into actually a live event to celebrate the achievements of our local students. We will do more to create more pop-up engagement experiences. We're engaged right now with the consultancy retail strategies to do more what they call tactical urbanism projects that just are temporary activations, especially in the vacant storefronts that we have. We still have the goal to get up to 20,000 Instagram followers. We want them to be very good quality followers that are like, not just, you know, just picked up through advertising means, but that they're engaging with us. And so, and then we also want to create more activities here by leveraging the community through offering technical assistance to those other entities that want to do events here through assistance with logistics permitting. We have capabilities, and we have equipment and ways to help anybody who wants to create an event here in the downtown. We also are going to continue with our street pole banners. You're going to be seeing very soon to some new, very cool banners that we just got done, that are metallic art banners that we're going to go around Oxnard Boulevard. They follow our overall branding theme with a papel picado and very colorful pop of color for the, especially that Boulevard corridor that's so important as our welcome mat to the downtown. So that'll be coming in the next couple of weeks. Next slide, please. And then let's go to Civil Sidewalks. This is really the foundation of the downtown programs. It's really, you can't do much of anything else unless you have a clean, safe, and inviting, attractive downtown. And so that's what just the Civil Sidewalks Committee is focused on, is issues sort of, like, you know, keeping it, every day, we have what's not listed here right in the everyday kind of things, is that we do have a crew that's out there seven days a week, sweeping, on-foot sweeping, and also pressure washing our sidewalks, keeping it nice and clean. And we do have a security team that is also patrolling constantly around here, and we're going to be augmenting that very soon as well. With one of our initiatives is to actually implement security cameras and other security means, like signage and stuff that we've seen has been very effective at the parking structure and some other facilities that we've done, but we're strategically looking at places to implement cameras and more surveillance. So very efficient way to deal with things. And then we definitely want our folks to be out there, to be prepared to deal with the unhoused population, to help them, help them across the board, to be able to provide direction to them, to the many resources that are out there in the community, including our partners in the Housing Department. And, yeah, so, and then we do want to really work much closer with our faith-based organizations. Part of our renewal this last time, we brought the churches back into our district. They had been exempted from the assessment for a few years, but we did do outreach to them, and we actually have one of their members that's on our Clean and Safe Civil Sidewalks Committee. So we're very pleased that they're involved and participating because it's important to their congregations and to the community at large. Next slide, please. Last slide. So we're wrapping up here soon. Land Use Committee, again, Land Use Committee does not have a budget, but it does have a very important function, and that is like, you know, making sure that we're on top of, like, you know, where the vacancies are and where the opportunities really, in terms of, you know, filling properties with high-value types of uses and everything. So we recently actually did propose also to, we would like to be involved more with efforts to find a viable use for the Carnegie. So I know that's something that we, outreach to the city, formal proposal to help facilitate that reopening of that very important cultural institution. But, yeah, let's go to the next final slide. So this is a summary of our work plan for the next year in terms of dollars and percentages allocated. The percentage is allocated to each of those program areas. They're predetermined, actually, by our management district plan, so these follow very closely with that. There's a little bit of latitude there, but, for instance, Civil Sidewalks is by our management district plan. We allocate 58% roughly to that on an annual basis. This year, we're at 57.4%. With District Identity, 14.3%, we're at 14.6%. So we're mirroring very close. We're delivering on the promise of what we told our constituents that they would get by signing on to assess themselves and to receive these benefits of the district. So, yeah, so wrapping it up, I'm just opening it up to questions, the last slide. There we go. There you guys are. So that's where we are. It's before you for hopefully that we can receive your blessing to move forward with our annual work plan. We start our new fiscal year December 1. So, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. At this point, do we have questions from Councilmembers? Councilwoman Starr.
First of all, I'd like to say that I'm really glad that you enjoyed the support from a vast majority of the property owners there. I remember when this came up before us, my concern was that maybe the city's vote, because weighted by property or acreage or whatever it is, was impacting the outcome. And it turns out that even without the city's vote, that you've got somewhere north of, I want to say it's like 70% support from the property owners. So that says a lot about the value that you're creating if they're willing to keep paying for that. I do have a question about the Civil Sidewalks portion of your proposal, the roughly 348,000 of the 607. So how much of that do you think ballpark is to address the aftermath of the homeless activities there there?
I'm sorry, didn't...
How much is caused by bankruptcy?
How much? It dominates our daily, you know, work and discussions at the committee level and elevates to our board, for sure. I mean, I would say, you know, it's all quality of life issues, really. We don't really have a really high crime rate in terms of, you know, serious type, I'm sorry, maybe I'm not using the correct term for type-one crimes, I think. I'm sorry, part-one crimes, yeah. We don't, you know, there's not a lot of that going on, but definitely trans vanity, vandalism, things like that, property crimes, those things do occur, and drug, open drug and alcohol use, yes.
Okay. And maybe more of a fun question. If I want to go out for dinner on a weekend here in downtown Oxnard, nice place, what would you recommend?
Oh, a nice place? Well, they're all nice. I mean, it's like, I don't want...
All right. You don't have to name them all.
I mean, I'm a man of simple tastes, so I go, I mean, I lean on places like, you know, Tacos de la Vida. I went to Laveros the other night. It was very good. And I will also say, Julián Chilis is amazing, and you will not find better hospitality to go along with an amazing culinary experience.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Additional questions from Councilmembers? Councilman Perlo.
Thank you for the presentation. Just one question. You mentioned that you had brought back in, there's potentially one faith-based group with you. And in your staff report, it says working with faith-based organizations on homeless outreach. Have you been able to touch base with all faith-based, and are some resistant? And can you identify who might be resistant to help you?
We haven't found resistance, no, but we focused on the two churches that are within the district, in the core of the district, the Church of the Nations and the Four Square Church. And we did something several years back, which I think is worth revisiting, which is a pastoral luncheon where we bring in members, and not just within the downtown, but from throughout the community, that we invite pastors and leaders in the faith-based organizations to come together, because I think they do have a very important role to play. And they're already, some of them are in the downtown. They regularly come. I know there's a group, they're called, I think, the Outsiders, that come to Plaza Park like weekly, and they feed the homeless population out there, but they also give them some direction and support, moral support to try to, so we have not found any pushback yet, but we have not yet to touch everybody.
Thank you, Eagle.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional questions? Councilmember Basua, do you have any questions?
I do not. Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
I just want to thank you all, because I know it's District 4, and I have seen huge improvement, just in the level of care and support that I've seen in the TLC that I've seen in downtown. I think the only one thing that I wanted to flag, and maybe this was situational one time, or maybe a few times, is that the security individual who oversees right there by the Starbucks, is it necessary for them to wear a face mask? Because I've seen that a few times, and it's just during these times where there's so much uncertainty and fear about, like, tactical gear, and I was just wondering if that's standard procedure or if we could just do more community engagement.
So, Councilwoman Rodriguez, thank you very much for that question. Actually, the Centennial Plaza actually employs their own staff, so I don't know that that's their standard operating procedure, or if there's some health reasons why they want that.
It could have been a cold night, but that was my one question. Besides that, I think everybody's doing an amazing job, and thank you for flagging. I have seen brighter lights, and it's just, it's nice to see all the care that goes into downtown. So I appreciate that. And I know, I think it's right outside the boundary, but the Salvation Army, is there any collaboration with the Salvation Army there? I think it's right outside. Yeah, Rescue Mission, sorry.
The Rescue Mission's in our district, and they're on our board.
And then, okay, so they're on your board, and so there's strong collaboration, because I know that they're also faith-based and...
Yeah, we try to engage them as much as possible, because they feed a large population that then hangs out in the district, waiting for the next meal. So I understand people are hungry, but we have to have a plan for what to do between breakfast, lunch, and dinner.
And I'm hoping things will get even better with the Navigation Center opening soon. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I'll just say that I appreciate the presentation and the update. There is an action associated to this, which we'll take in just a moment. I do want to point out that I was following this lighting in Plaza Park replacement, and I'm happy to see those are there. And I know it was an extended process, and I'll just say this for the public, please be careful when you're parking there, because those are, those took a long time to replace. They're like custom-built and then painted to match the other ones, and so just be mindful of that, folks. And then I appreciate also the mention of Narcan training for staff in your presentation, and it's just a reality of where we are in 2025 in America, not unique to the city of Oxnard or even this region. And there we have mention of that later in the updates, and so I'll speak more on that. But I just want to thank you for that.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, are there any comments for this item?
Mayor Protem and Councilmembers, we do not have any public speakers in person or virtually for this item. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And actually, we have an action attached to this, right? Okay, so there is a recommendation here. What's the pleasure of the council?
I'm moving that we approve the annual work plan.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion by Councilwoman Starr and a second by Councilmember Perlo. Can we get the vote, please?
Councilmember Perlo?
To clarify before you finish the vote, it's the work plan and the budget.
That is correct. I'm moving staff's recommendation. How's that?
Thank you, Councilmember.
Second.
Yes. Councilmember Perlo?
Yes.
Councilwoman Perez?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilmember Starr?
Yes.
Councilwoman Basua?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Teran?
Yes.
And this motion carries six to zero. Thank you.
Great. Thank you all again.
Thank you very much. One last thing, I wanted to correct on the serious omission. I wanted to recognize Ashley Goldin here as a member of our board and your representative on our organization. Thank you so much again for this.
Thank you.
Sorry, Ashley.
Okay, so we're going to move on from the appointment items and the time when we'll do applause, now into the regular meeting. So I'm going to go ahead and call the regular meeting to order for the Oxnard City Council, Community Development Commission, Successor Agency, Financing Authority, and Oxnard Housing Authority for Tuesday, October 21, 2025. Madam Clerk, may we have the roll call and posting of the agenda, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance?
Commissioner Andrade. Councilwoman, Commissioner Basua?
Here.
Councilmember, Commissioner Perlo?
Here.
Councilwoman, Commissioner Perez?
Here.
Councilwoman, Commissioner Rodriguez?
Present.
Councilman, Commissioner Starr?
Here.
Mayor Protem Vice-Chair Teran?
Here.
The agenda for this meeting was posted in the kiosk at City Hall, the Oxnard Public Library, the city administrative offices, and on the city's website on Thursday, October 9, and the amended agenda on Thursday, October 16. I also have an announcement pursuant to Government Code Section 54952.3, each member of the Housing Board of Commissioners present will receive $50 for convening this meeting, with the exception of Council Commissioner Starr, who has declined to receive compensation. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And Mr. City Attorney, at this point, do we have to do another disclosure for Councilwoman Basua, who's joining us virtually?
We can do a summary of what is going on with that. So prior to convening to the first item on the agenda this evening, which was the closed session, Councilwoman Basua announced her need to exercise her right under the Brown Act to attend the meeting remotely due to a medical emergency, and the council voted to approve her doing so.
Thank you very much. Oh, excuse me. Now we're going to do the Pledge of Allegiance. Councilwoman Perlo, would you mind leading us?
[inaudible]
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 The next item on the agenda is public comments for items not on the agenda. A person may address a legislative body only on matters not appearing on the agenda and within the subject matter jurisdiction of the legislative body. Speaker requests shall be submitted and set forth on the, on the first, the first page of this agenda, excuse me. Speakers are limited to three minutes. After 30 minutes, if all speakers have not had the opportunity to speak, the remaining speakers will be given an opportunity to speak prior to the adjournment of the meeting. The legislative body cannot enter into a detailed discussion or take action on any items presented during public comments at this time. Such items may only be referred to the city manager, executive director, secretary for administrative action or scheduled on a subsequent agenda for discussion. Persons wishing to speak on public, on public hearing items should do so at the time of the hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on items not on the agenda and non-action items, please come forward and fill out a speaker card if you choose to do so, or if you're joining us virtually, please press star nine to raise your hand. We have a number of in-person speakers, and we have one speaker who signed up to be with us ahead of time, virtually. And so, Madam Clerk, if they were available, I'd like to go to the pre-signed-up virtual speaker.
And Mayor Protem and councilmembers, she is not joining us yet, so we'll come back.
Thank you. We'll check in after the end of the speakers, if, to see if she has joined. Councilwoman Starr?
Yeah, I need to ask this question. So, earlier today, I received an email from Mr. Andrist. He had prepared a video for presentation, which he's allowed to do. I think he was given advice by the city that he can do so, but only in person or on the phone. And that may be correct, it may not be correct, I don't know. I haven't read through the Brown Act to see if somebody could actually do that. I would suggest that in an abundance of caution, to make sure we don't deprive somebody of their right to speak, that we allow him to play that video. But I would also request that we get some sort of advice from the city attorney's office to see how the Brown Act is impacted, impacts this decision. So, that'd be my advice, that we allow this, at least this one time, until we can get something definitive in, in writing from the city attorney's office as to whether someone can make a presentation who's not actually present.
Thank you, Councilmember Starr. I believe we received a copy of that in writing this afternoon, but we'll go through the speakers. If Mr. Andrist joins virtually, we will visit. But once we go through all the speakers, we'll check in with the city attorney on that. Thank you. For our in-person speakers, excuse me, we have Clinton Tatuna, excuse me.
Tatum.
Tatum, oh, Clinton Tatum and Mrs. Tatum.
Uh, go ahead, no?
Yes, please, go ahead. You have three minutes.
We might be here prematurely. We're responding to the article that was in the Starr paper, October 12th, concerning the condos planned, or hearing, condos being considered by Colonia Road, the lemon plant, where the former lemon plant. Okay. My father had a business right across from the lemon plant in the 50s. It's now Nash Radiator. My father also had a business on Cooper Road, next to the railroad track, now called Paul's Auto Garage. My father was hit by a train at, on Cooper Road. The comments that I want to make concerning the development, this housing development, is that that's a very dangerous area next to the railroad track. Very dangerous. I don't think anyone should consider building houses, condominiums there, with trains passing. And the fumes that come out of those trains are terrible. I, I assume if condos are approved, there would be children there. And so, my mom, my mom is a, by the way, my mom is 100 years old. She, she wanted to come and speak, because, as she put it, if this ever gets considered by the city council, she may not be available to speak then. So, that's why we're here. But I'm going to add another comment, besides our concern about that. Fifty years or so ago, the city council approved building an overpass over the Third Street from connecting Colonia to the rest of the city of Oxnard. I really think the council should commission Public Works to look at building another overpass from Colonia, because either from Colonia Road, over Oxnard Boulevard, or from Rose Avenue over Fifth Street, you have a high demand of traffic. I've been able to observe, there's less traffic going over the one freeway at Channel Islands.
Thank you, Mr. Tatum.
Thank you for your comments.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Tatum. Thank you, Mrs. Tatum.
Did you want to say something?
No.
If she does another card, we can give three minutes to her.
Here, is that I hope that none of you, or any members of your family, would ever have to endure what my family endured at this time of the accident. He was a well-viber, educated, college-educated man, had served in the military for two years, when we decided to come to Oxnard, and to have his life practically wiped away out because of the railroad track, and there was no signal of crossing. We further went to court on it, which we couldn't go to court until after five years of the accident. And we lost the trial with the railroad company, and found, discovered late, later, after the trial was over, that one of the main witnesses that the railroad had was a man that said he was there, and we found out he was not there. He was at a beverage bar drinking beer with a friend, five blocks down the street. And all of this has been very, very agonizing and misery, that me, as a young female, coming to Oxnard and ruined three children here, two of them were born here in Oxnard at that time. And I'd just like this record to go in consideration if they ever, if this developer ever decides to say, we want to build 121 apartments at that crossing, a husband's crossing, was parallel with the railroad track.
Thank you for giving us the opportunity.
Thank you both. And, Madam Clerk, if we can, oh, we have a card. Thank you very much. Our next speakers, excuse me, our next speaker will be Carolina Gallardo Magaña, followed by Sofia Vega.
Hi, good evening, Mayor Protem and councilmembers. My name is Carolina Gallardo Magaña, and I am a resident of South Oxnard. And I'm here to express my, our deep concern about the situation that we're living through in our city, and around, I mean, throughout the whole nation. But our main concern is about our police department. And let me clarify, I am not anti-police, I am a pro-police. But I am very concerned right now about situations that are happening. I am the eyes, I am the ears and mouth of those who are afraid or perhaps are shy to come and speak out. For us, the Oxnard, the community of Oxnard seems like the Oxnard Police Department is providing security for ICE. As you are all aware, I have sent an email to all of you, including Chief Benitez. This was requesting a public meeting where people can come and attend and have their questions answered. The community is losing trust in our police department, and that's very sad. And I don't blame them, because we see the facts on the streets. Oxnard Police Department says one thing, but we can see the clear facts. I do understand that they must have a protocol to follow, that we, the community, don't know. We had a scene last week of ICE OPD. OPD involvement was completely unacceptable for us, the community. And to make things worse, their first statement on social media was completely wrong by blaming the individual involved, when in fact, it was the other way around. It was ICE who was at fault, as we all saw it in the video that was posted in social medias. We demand that you, as elected officials, chosen to uplift and protect the constituent you serve, require the police department, specifically Chief Benitez, to end all collaboration with ICE immediately. Many of you were newly elected, and others are up for election. Please remember that we walked the community for you during your campaigns. We hope you to get where you are now, and we will mobilize the same community to hold you accountable. Mayor MacArthur right now is absent, but in one of his Facebook responses, he said, I set priorities, oversee departments, including PD, and respond decisively to incidents. My involvement is crucial for ensuring police department or police accountability. Then, again, we are requesting a public hearing or a town hall to address these urgent issues concerns. Community policing in Oxnard is, okay, so the time to act is now. Please listen to, to your community, where you were elected to serve, please, and keep the trust in the community, for the police department and for all of you. And I'm sorry for going over the time.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Magaña. Our next speaker is Sofia Vega, followed by Alicia Purcell.
Good evening, Mayor Protem, councilmembers. My name is Sofia Vega, and I was born and raised and still live in Oxnard. As we all know, unless you live under a rock, ICE has been terrorizing our community. Kidnapping people from their workplace, homes, or off the streets. Kids left without a parent, or without both. Kids living with the uncertainty if their parents will come back home after working all day. What happened on Thursdays is a disgrace. If Oxnard Police, if only Oxnard Police Department responded to its citizens the way they respond to La Migra, what could possibly happen? 10 police cars for one person? What was that service call for? And what was OPD, what was OPD's reaction instead? There is a deep concern regarding the disturbing incident last week involving the Department of Homeland Security, in which a US citizen was detained after their vehicle was rammed by DHS agent, right? We all saw that video. This event raises urgent questions about the use of force, accountability, and the protection of civil liberties in our city. Disturbingly, OPD officers appear to assist or shield, right? SolarX also released a video. Shield DHS during and after this incident, rather than ensuring the safety and rights of that individual involved. No residents should be subjected to violent tactics by federal agents without transparency or justification. It is imperative that you are able to investigate this matter as councilmembers and Chief Benitez, and knowing what to do if this were to happen again. I urge you to stand up for the rights of all residents, and to ensure that city leadership remains committed to justice, due process, and the safety of our community. Is there an unbiased OPD oversight group? How are people invited or selected? Have any public forums have been scheduled for anyone in the public? Or is it just recorded? Chief Benitez, does, does the response time differ based on the person's location when they call? I do understand the levels, but is it, it just doesn't make sense when this, we see how they react. Our city must prioritize transparency, uphold and protect our citizens, and ensure that our police serve the public and not La Migra, who continue to terrorize our streets in Oxnard. We hope that officers who speak the language, Spanish, respond to that Spanish speaker who caught, made the call as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Alicia Purcell, followed by Marvin Booze.
At the last council meeting on an item about the police department replacing its firearms, the council encountered some procedural difficulties. So, tonight, I want to explain why I was shaking my head no, sitting in the audience, about the procedural confusion. So, aside from the option of voting no on any proposal at all, there were three options the council could have adopted. So, one, the main motion was the staff recommendation, and you could have adopted it without any amendment. But there were two proposed amendments from councilmembers Perez and Starr. So, you also had the options of the main motion with the Perez amendment, the primary amendment, or the main motion with the Starr amendment, the secondary amendment. The council needed to take three votes to consider all three options, but only two votes were taken. You did take the first vote that needed to happen, which is to decide the question, if one of these amendments is going to be added to the main motion, which of the two do you prefer? The council voted, it preferred the Starr amendment. The second vote, and, and this is a step that was skipped, the second vote, once you chose the Starr amendment over the Perez amendment, you needed to decide whether you preferred the main motion, the staff recommendation, with or without the Starr amendment. You could have voted down the amendment and proceeded with the main motion not amended at all. Instead, you were advised that the first vote, choosing between the two amendments, had already incorporated the preferred amendment into the main motion. So, you skipped the second step, and instead just went to the straight, straight to the final step, voting on the main motion, with the assumption the Starr amendment was preferred to be in the main motion. The net effect was basically deprive the council of the opportunity to vote on the staff recommendation as originally made with no amendment at all, and that was one of the options you had. The procedural uncertainty could have been replaced with the following quick and orderly progression to deal with both amendments efficiently. It could have gone like this. Mayor Protem could have stayed the first question as. The question is now whether to replace the primary amendment offered by Perez with the secondary amendment offered by Starr. Those who prefer the Starr amendment say yes, those who prefer Perez say no. Once that's decided, the Starr amendment was preferred, so it became the primary amendment. The next step would have been, the question is now whether to amend the staff recommendation with the Starr proposal. Those in favor of adding the Starr amendment to the main motion say aye, and those who oppose adding the Starr amendment say no. Once that was decided, then the final step was to vote on the main motion as amended, or not, if you had voted down the Starr amendment. So, I bring this up, hopefully, to help you the next time that you encounter a similar situation. That's why there was another step. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Marvin Booze, followed by Greg Runyon.
Good evening, everybody. I've come here tonight with mixed emotions, because I did some work to get ready for this, only to find out that Steve Hallett, Public Works, has already taken care of part of it. But I think it's very important. I've done envelopes for all the city councilpeople concerning our city parks. Last Monday, I went over to Wilson Park to see how things were looking. And when I stopped, first thing I noticed on Palm Drive was all the dead spots in the lots, which, a number of months ago, it was perfectly, perfectly clean and green. So, I got out of my car, and I was walking up and down Palm Street, checking out the grass. grass, and I noticed that there's patches, some pretty good-sized patches, that are completely dead. I walked over there, and I started kicking up the dirt, and I'm finding a lot of pine needles. When I say a lot, I mean a lot of pine needles. So I went back to my truck, and I got my rake, started raking it all up and everything. And the pine needles, you know, they're about this long, but when they're mowed four or five times, you don't even see them, but there are a ton of them. Normally what happens is through the mowing of the lawn and the cutting up of the pine needles, they form layers on the ground. When they get to a certain thickness, and I can't tell you what it is, but when it gets to a certain thickness, no sunlight gets through. When the lawns are watered, I don't think they're watered probably 10 minutes, so water doesn't come through. Nothing grows under the pine needles, absolutely nothing. So I spent Monday, while the contractors were there doing landscaping, they had already mowed the lawn, but they were leaf blowing and picking up some trash. And I'm out there with my rake, and I'm raking all these brown spots, and all of a sudden, I got this amount of pine needles, bigger, bigger, and bigger. Must have been just justing probably about four foot high and probably three, four foot square. I talked to one of the contractors. I said, you know, that I can't tell you how to do your job. That's not my position. I can't tell you how to do your job or what needs to be done. However, I sent emails to the mayor and to Steve Hallett that we are paying these contractors good money. Heard it already? Anyway, you got pictures of Wilson and...
Community Center Park West. Thank you, Mr. Boos. And I see the Public Works Director is online, and I'm sure your comments are noted. Okay, we have our next speaker, Greg Runyon, and then we will revisit our pre-signed virtual speaker.
Good evening, everyone. Sorry, I got here a little late. It's always troubling when events happen that involve the police department. And the thing that continues to happen with immigration, I'm not even going to pretend to understand what that feels like or what's going on. But I also think education's important for people to understand that it is not fair to ask our local department to take up arms against the federal government or to run interference against the federal government. I think better partnerships are important, but I think some understanding, because the job of police department is to keep all residents safe. Along those lines, I wanted to compliment Councilman Perez a couple of weeks ago for... I don't know how many times I've shared that y'all are voted in to serve all the residents, and sometimes there are things that you may not personally agree with, that you might want done a different way, but for the needs of all the community. And it takes a very confident and secure person to do that, so I wanted to commend you for that. But lastly, speaking of the police, on Thursday, our church was vandalized. A 14-year-old young boy damaged our stained glass windows and then proceeded to get in the building and pretended there was a fire and played with the fire extinguisher. Said he was bored. He then went across the street to the OPAC and did a lot of damage to their stored construction equipment. The officers who responded were fabulous, not only in how they handled our situation, but the care and the seriousness that they talked with this individual with. I also was able to talk with the individual's parents. So I just think our police department, sometimes, we really, we have expectations that are very high. And when they meet them, we have a tendency to say, well, that's their job. Being a police officer is not a paycheck. I'm going to tell you, it's a calling. And when they do a good job, we need to thank them, and we need to say, hey, a good job. So next time someone gives you a ticket and you're speeding, say thank you, not, hey, why didn't you catch somebody else? And I'm being very serious, because they do a great job and they deserve some praise. Thank you.
Thank you very much. At this time, we'll go to our pre-signed-up speaker who is here virtually. If there are any members of the audience who would like to make a public comment and have not yet done so, you can do a card with the city clerk. If you're online, you can press star nine to raise your hand if you'd like to speak. Madam Clerk, I believe we have Sarah Wilczewski, who's signed up ahead of time to speak virtually.
Sarah, if you can press star six to unmute, and you have three minutes, starting now. Sarah, you can start now. Sarah?
Can you hear me now?
Yes. You have three minutes, starting now.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Protem Karan, city council, and city staff. My name is Sarah Wilczewski. I am here as a volunteer with 805 Immigrant Rapid Response Network and 805 Undeoccupied. And once again, I'd like to ask city council to take action to support our vulnerable family, friends, and neighbors. On October 1st, ICE sees a huge boost in funding. Since then, we have only seen them get more aggressive and more dangerous in their actions. While we have not seen another glass house, it is only a matter of time. Just last week, they ran the volunteer responder's car and arrested him here in Oxnard. Oxnard PD stood by while this happened and then blamed the victim in their statement before investigating what happened. Thankfully, they retracted that statement, but it still contributed to the growing distrust in police of this community. That made national news. And it is now October 21st, and we need you to take action now. You've already voted supporting Newsom v. Trump and entering into an MOU, so you provide us with legal assistance to immigrants onto the agenda, so thank you for doing that, and I urge you to take action on these items quickly. And to the community, if you see any ICE activity or have been impacted by them, please call or text the 805-Undeoccupied hotline, 805-870-8855. You can also text alerts or alert us to the hotline and receive alerts when we have confirmed ICE sightings. You can also volunteer with us. We have a training coming up in Newbury Park next Monday, and you can find information about that on our website. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, at this point, do we have any additional speakers?
Mayor Protem and council members, that concludes our speakers on items not on the agenda, in person and virtually.
Okay. Before we conclude this, Mr. City Attorney, Councilmember Starr, had brought up earlier about Mr. Andrus pre-submitting a video he would like to have played. I believe that... I see Mr. Rozell walking up to the podium here. There was a question about the compliance with the Brown Act as it pertains to a speaker wishing to have a statement made or make a presentation with them not present. Mr. Rozell or Mr. Fisher, I'll turn it over to you if you have any information you can provide to this council.
So Mr. Rozell can add to what I have to say, but the council has, for years, accepted written comments that people submit for the council review on items not on the agenda or items on the agenda, and they do not have to show up to read those, though they can if they want to. Those statements are made part of the record of a council meeting. They are not read into the record. That is not something that is required to be done. The video is a similar situation.
Thank you. Anything additional to that, Mr. Rozell?
Yes, just to provide some clarification for the record. So as Mr. Fisher indicated, Mr. Andrus had the ability to provide comments. He sent emails to all the members of the council at 1:43 PM this afternoon, which included a text of his presentation, video links, and other information. And as far as what we're proposing and recommending, as far as just having this video submitted, there is full compliance with the Brown Act. Sorry, my phone just went to sleep. So under Government Code Section 549, 54.3, that every agenda has to provide an opportunity for members of the public to directly address the legislative body on any items of interest. That does not say they have a right to send YouTube video links and have those played. So that's the right for presentation to the city council in person. In addition, in Mr. Andrus's comments, very dramatic comments and big red letters and other things, he referenced Measure M. So I'm very familiar with Measure M. I wrote the impartial analysis and am very aware, so I just wanted to point out one section, which does not, as Mr. Andrus indicated, give him the right just to send a YouTube link and have that played. The section of Measure M, which became part of the Oxnard City Code in November of 2020, is Section 2-1.5 entitled Public Comment. So there's three sections, subsections, excuse me, of Section 2-1.5. So Section A indicates that the agenda needs to provide opportunity for members of the public to address the legislative body on any item on the agenda that tracks the language of the Brown Act that I has read to you before. Measure M differs in that it says each person shall receive no less than three minutes to comment on any item before the agenda. The Brown Act allows the last, but that was something that the voters adopted by 57% of the vote, so that is there. And then Measure M provided additional language, saying that reasonable accommodations need to be made to facilitate the presentation of videos, PowerPoints, and similar presentations during public comment. But the key point, it says that presenters shall be required to provide hard copies of presentations to members of the legislative body. Because the presenters are there, if you have a presenter, that is an individual. That is someone who has either introduced the video or is there or uses, for example, PowerPoint slides to make the presentation. So there is nothing in Measure M, there's nothing in the Brown Act, which says that an individual can send a video link, and the city council is required to listen to that. If you think about the ability of, if anyone who sent a link could require a three-minute video to be played, you literally could get dozens or hundreds of video links each meeting. And if that interpretation that Mr. Andrus has proposed was given effect, you would be required to listen to all of those videos before you could go home and the meeting can be completed. That is clearly not the intent of the Brown Act, it's not the intent of Measure M, based on the actual, the language of Measure M. And there's nothing in Measure M, including in the findings and declaration, that would have a different interpretation.
Thank you, Mr. Rozell. And I understand your statement earlier around an abundance of caution, Councilmember Starr, but on the other side of that coin, an abundance of caution, as was stated here, are we setting precedent to act in an equitable way if we play a video for someone who is not present but requested a video be played, and then in the future say, you must be present to play the video? So Mr. Andrus's video has been entered into the record, or his link, as well as the information that the clerk has just passed out to us in hard copy, and I invite him to share his comments with the public, as is intended by this part of the meeting. And I appreciate both of you weighing in on that. Thank you very much. We're going to move on.
I'd like to comment still, sorry.
Councilmember Starr.
Appreciate it.
We're going to move on because there's already an extended amount of time just to speak on this.
I haven't spoken on this yet.
This isn't the time to speak on this item, on this topic. We heard from the city attorney's office on a question that was raised. They responded to it.
So I have a question for this. I have a question for the city attorney, then.
You have a question to go into extended, additional extended discussion on this? Is that what you're saying?
I have a question for what the city attorney just said to us. And my question is, the scenario that you paint, where a bunch, hundreds of people could send us video links, don't you have the same issue if 100 people call in and say, I want to play this video? We'd have to listen to all those, too. I think we're talking about an edge case here, aren't we?
And the answer is yes, and the reality is, Mr. Andrus doesn't want to do that, so...
They would be present to do that.
He doesn't want to call in and be a speaker to introduce his video to be played, then it won't be played.
And thank you, Mr. Rozell. Respectfully, I appreciate that. I think that was a very straightforward answer. Excuse me, and we're going to move on.
Okay.
Thank you. So the next item on the agenda is Item H, Report of City Manager/Executive Director/Secretary. And I will give the city manager the floor.
Thank you. How much I enjoy being the segue between these parts of the agenda. So tonight, we just have some calendar types of announcements and a few other acknowledgements to make. Okay, so if I can have Mr. Diego put up the slides, here we go. So the first one is a reminder, at the last council, we had a visit from, I think they were called Jack and Sally, to foreshadow the Halloween float tours, traversing the city between last night and October 30th. So this is the world-famous Oxnard Halloween float, going around on certain evenings around the community. Please note that goblins and ghouls also need to take a break, so they will not have the tours on October 24th, 26th, or the 27th. However, right now, they are somewhere in the Del Norte community. Tomorrow, they'll be in the Northwest community. There's a list of places they'll visit. I'm not going to read all of this, because you can follow them live on social media, and it's, I think I recognize these, Facebook and Instagram, and the handle is @OxnardRec. Or you can call the hotline, the number is 805-402-0403. Maybe we should call them right now and see where they are. Then Thursday, they'll be in the South Central community. This is all in the evening, between 4:30 and 7:30 PM. Saturday, South Oxnard Halloween Block Party at the South Oxnard Center, and that's from 5:00 to 8:30 PM. And the next week, on Tuesday, the 28th, they'll be at the Southwest community during the evening, 4:30 to 7:30 PM, driving around, and it's mostly around schools and some other locations. Wednesday, October 29th, the Central community, and then finally, Thursday, October 30th, the Del Norte community. So you can go and see the world-famous Oxnard Halloween float, driving around those locations, those dates, between now and October 30th. Okay, next, this is a pretty interesting and important workshop coming up a week from tonight, here in the council chambers, during the Public Works Committee. This is a public workshop to hold a policy discussion and proposal about installing, not all at once, because that would be incredibly expensive, but the discussion about, should we put lights, different kinds of lights, in our parks for evening use? This is a very interesting and important discussion to have, because for many decades, I think for maybe perhaps three decades, this city has had a dawn-to-dusk policy, meaning usage in the parks start in the morning and end when the sun goes down. So there's been lots of requests over the years to have activity in some of our So, there's been lots of requests over the years to have activity in some of our parks during the evenings. It's especially important, obviously, during wintertime, when the sun goes down a little bit earlier. So, we're going to have this public workshop. Next Tuesday evenings, we invite everyone to ideally join here in person. But of course, as always, you can email or your comments ahead of time, or even afterwards, and you can participate remotely, or just view it online during or after the committee. So, that is again, a discussion, a public workshop, about the possibility of installing lights in some of our parks, so that they can have evening activity, evening use. So, we look forward to having that workshop. Okay, on Saturday, November 1st, this is our next free drop-off day at the Del Norte. They have a nice name for it, I just like to call it the Trash Place. Okay, so, this is, and many of us have been through this before, it's from 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM, at the Del Norte Regional Recycling and Transfer Station. This is the day when Oxnard residents get to come and take their bulky items and other things that they want to dispose of there for free. Now, there are some items that we cannot take, and there are some limitations, so please do a little research ahead of time. You can get information at the city's website, so you can go to www.oxnard.gov/dropoff, this will take place, rain or shine. Obviously, if it's raining, it, it, there may be a slight delay, but I've, I've said this before, I've done this before, and there, there will, you know, unless you get there first thing, there will be a line, but they move it through pretty quickly. So, again, this is to encourage people to take their bulky items to the proper place, rather than putting it on the, the side of the road or in the middle of our parks. Please do a little research to understand what items you can and cannot dispose of there, or what the limitations are. So, again, go to our website, oxnard.gov/dropoff, for the information. You can also call, the phone number is 805-385-8060. Those are rather busy days, and we do appreciate people taking, making the effort to take their bulky waste there, instead of putting them on the side of the road. Okay, next is a relatively new program called Voices of Oxnard Youth. So, this is obviously an invitation to young people to get involved. And I don't know too much about this, so I'm going to ask Councilwoman Perez to share with young people between 10th and 12th graders to why they should do this.
Thank you, City Manager. Just a little bit of historical context, Mayor Protem and I launched the 2025 Summer Youth Academy, and this is a next step iteration to create long-term change in our community. And so, the Mayor Protem and I are honored to launch this first program called Voices of Oxnard Youth, otherwise known as VOY. This working group aims to elevate youth perspectives and empower Oxnard youth to take an active role in shaping their communities. The application went live this past Monday and closes on Friday, November 14th. Selected applicants will be notified by Thursday, November 5th, with an orientation scheduled for Wednesday, January 7th, 2026. I encourage all of our community members out there, as well as our high school partners, to share this resource with our community members. I think it's really important to have, including our, our older generation, but our young perspective, as we know, we have a growing population of young people, not only to prepare them for pathways into local government and exposing them to how the landscape of local government operates, but to really continue to ensure that we are, you know, keeping in mind the lens of youth perspectives here in the city of Oxnard. So, for those that are interested, or have young people that they work with, or family members, applications will be available at www.oxnard.gov, and you can click on Voices of Oxnard Youth to apply. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. Next, naloxone dispensers have been installed recently at four locations, the Oxnard Service Center, the Main Library, the South Oxnard Library, as well as the Transit Center. Now, these have been in the news a lot in recent years, obviously pertaining to the opioid epidemic. These are becoming eventually more and more common, just like many public locations have those machines for, for heart attacks, the AEDs. So, I'd like to think that we would have eventually gotten around to getting these, it's a, it's a special program. But I want to thank the Mayor Protem, Gabe Turan, for encouraging us to move faster rather than slower. So, I'm gonna ask him to explain the significance of these.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. So, you can see here, these are naloxone dispensers. I'll first give thanks to our fire chief and our human resources director, Mr. Navo, for their work on this. I had approached a city manager and them last year about potentially having naloxone available in our public-facing facilities, as the city manager mentioned, essentially stored with our AEDs and first aid kits, something that is available if it were ever needed. And I anticipate that there may be people in the public who may still have the mindset of, well, aren't you just enabling people, or you're allowing them to overdose, and you bring them back, and they can do it again? To which, I would say that the alternative is people dying on our streets, in our facilities, at the library, in the parking lot of the Transit Center. The way that these opioids work in depressing our respiratory system and other vital organs, the respiratory system slows down, and to the point of them not getting enough oxygen into their blood, and then to their brain. And so, naloxone will reverse the effects of that, and will allow them to temporarily, for a little while, come back to at least a more regular respiratory rate, and they can get to emergency services in that time. All of our first responders carry naloxone with them, but even if we have a four-and-a-half minute response time, after about three minutes to four minutes, there is serious brain damages happening through the lack of oxygen going to a person's brain. So, the sooner they can get naloxone on board to start getting that respiratory rate back to something that is a little bit more sufficient, the better. So, these public-facing facilities came to mind. In the interim, though, when I asked this, the County of Ventura Public Health Department started this initiative of getting these dispensers out into the public. And they are in private facilities, as well as public facilities, and the city of Oxnard, our same staff I mentioned earlier, connected with them. And you will find these now at the Service Center here on C Street, the Main Library on A Street, the South Oxnard Library on Saviors, and the Oxnard Transit Center on Fourth Street. And again, I appreciate the work that went into this. Every chance that somebody gets to come back from an unintentional overdose, or whatever led them to that situation, is another chance for them to turn it all around. So, I hope folks will look at it that way as well. And all of us have a role in helping our fellow community members, especially when they may be at the lowest point in their lives, and sometimes that's through active substance use disorders. So, thank you, Mr. City Manager, and thank you to the Chief, Hamilton, and thank you to Mr. Navo.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, and to acknowledge that it's, although all those people did the, the very important work of getting the, the program and getting the supplies, it's actually our facilities staff that installed this, so thank you to them too. Okay, and then finally, two acknowledgements. Okay, first is, it's National Planning Month. And the mayor went to the staff to provide them the commendation for National Planning Month. And so, this took place in October, recently. And I, I know Councilmember Perlo is gonna ask me to introduce everyone, so we're ready this time. So, here we go. From left to right, okay, so, on the far left, that is, and I'm gonna try my best to pronounce everyone's name as correctly as possible, is Markham Caldwell. Next, and here's where I am stumped, because the planners didn't plan this well, there are two rows, so I'm not sure if this next person is in the front or in the back, is John Miguel Dolby, and Christopher Murillo, Rojaleo Solis, Daniel Hook, J. Dobrowolski, Kristen Guzman, Jamie Peltier, Joe Pearson, Iris Rodriguez, Kathleen Mallory, Matt Simkins, Tai Chow, Brandon Butros, and of course, the mayor's there with them. So, this is the, also building and engineering folks. So, congratulations to all of them for National Planning Month. Okay, well, it was also Code Enforcement Appreciation Week. Now, this is easy, because there's only one row. Here we go. So, on the far left, Manuel Achoa, Robert Gayona, Michael Sherberth, Roxana Baez, Andrew Dixon, holding the commendation there, he's the code enforcement manager, Jeff Pingili, and again, Tai Chow. So, congratulations to them for Code Enforcement Appreciation Week. And I think Andrew Dixon is piloting the new uniform color there for them, for code enforcement. So, you might see all of them in that color soon. And that's it. Thank you very much. Congratulations to them.
Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is Item I, City Council Housing Authority Successor Agency Financing Authority Business Committee Reports. At this time, a member of the legislative body may make a brief announcement, or make a brief report on their activities. Further, members of the legislative body may request a schedule consideration of whether to place an agenda on a future, excuse me, an item on a future agenda. The legislative body cannot enter in a detailed discussion or take action on any item presented during this report. The members' report shall not exceed three minutes, unless additional time is granted by the presiding officer. Do any councilmembers have any announcements on anything to report? We will start down the line and work our way from the outward in, so we'll start with Councilwoman Perez.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I wanted to acknowledge and really reiterate the drop-off days at Del Norte. For our neighborhood council chairs, this would be a good opportunity to share out with the community. I know I spend a lot of time driving throughout the district, taking pictures and uploading them on 311, and see a ton of mattresses and furniture left in alleyways, so definitely encourage the community to take advantage of that resource. I also wanted to take the moment to thank the speakers that came tonight, and happy to facilitate an introduction offline, because I know that there may be an existing roundtable that highlights a lot of these concerns, and can give some formal details about next steps, and maybe perhaps events that are focused on the issues that were presented tonight, specifically within our community and within our South Oxnard community. I did want to also share a brief update, I know it's required. I, I and myself, and Councilmember Rodriguez, participated in the League of California Cities Conference in Long Beach, that took place on October 8th through 10th. The conference convened city council members, mayors, and staff from across the state to discuss pressing issues, legislation, and best practices. I had the opportunity to attend community discussions, including prepping local leaders for immigration policy changes, the future of technology, why every municipality needs a technology plan, even smaller ones, and engaged in discussions on grant opportunities. The conference was really informative, and it's just a great opportunity to bring back new strategies and practices that other cities are implementing to strengthen their own communities. I did want to also share the neighborhood council meetings that are coming up. Tonight, we did have our Redwood Neighborhood Council meeting at 6:00 PM, unfortunately couldn't make it, because I'm here tonight. On Wednesday, October 22nd, Bryce Canyon North and South will be holding their election meeting at 6:30. Thursday, October 23rd, Blackstock South will be holding their election meeting at 6:00 PM. I'll be attending both of these meetings. And I just wanted to also remind folks to definitely go out to the South Oxnard Halloween Block Party this Saturday, that's happening from 5 to 8:30 at the South Oxnard Center. Unfortunately, I won't be able to be in attendance, as I'll be at an event, you know, acknowledging and recognizing leaders from our South Winds community. And that is my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilmember Perlo.
Thank you very much. First, I want to thank the city manager for acknowledging the members of the public by name. Oftentimes, the people who work for the city of Oxnard, who happen to wear a uniform, easily identify in the city of Oxnard, very seldom do they ever hear the word "thank you." And, and at least an acknowledgement of their name makes a big deal, in my mind. I don't know about the rest, but in my mind, it makes a big deal. Along that was saying "thank you." I need to say thank you to Ms. Purcell, for taking the time to come up and adjust a microphone for two members of the public who are speaking. Thank you for doing that. The issue that I'd like to address tonight, there's a lot of issues that people bring to the city, but one issue, no matter what side of the flag you are, red, blue, indifferent, legal, illegal, rich, poor, white, brown, black, pink, or yellow, water is a significant part of your life. And there's very little attention spent by a city of over 200,000 people, Oxnard. Sometimes I relate and say, close to a quarter of a million people. Very little attention is spent to an agency that has control over actions for the city of Oxnard to get water, called Fox Canyon Groundwater Management Agency. Tomorrow, they have a meeting at the Ventura County Board of Supervisors Room at 12:30. The address is 800 South Victoria Avenue, Ventura. It's the government center where the Board of Supervisors meeting. Nice, big room, comfortable seats, lots of TVs, five people make decisions. One of the decisions tomorrow happens to be item number 14, impacting potentially what's gonna happen with the city of Oxnard's rights to get water. I don't, I'm not, don't have the time and the expertise to go in to tell you this, but if you take the time, if you're interested in water, and you go to the Ventura County website, www.fcgma.org, you can pull the agenda for October 22nd, the item is number 14. Read it. If you can make sense out of it, you're a better human being than me. But it has to do with the water that you will be able to use or not use, and exactly how much money somebody else is gonna decide you pay for it. I hope it's of interest to somebody in the city of Oxnard.
Thank you, Councilmember. Yes, go ahead.
I beg your pardon. I hope it's of interest to some resident in the city of Oxnard. We have staff that are fighting tooth and nail to get what I believe our city is entitled to. I don't want to compliment the entire staff working for the city of Oxnard. It'd be nice if some residents would back them up.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Basua, do you have updates?
I have no comments tonight, thank you.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Andrade? Then, okay, Councilor Starr.
Thank you. I attended the Rose Park Neighborhood Council meeting, which just happened a week ago or so. The city manager was there giving a presentation, staff were there as well to answer questions. Mallory regret is that there weren't more people from the neighborhood that was there. I think staff seemed to outnumber the people that were actually otherwise attending. I also attended the, I guess it was the skate park community event this last Saturday. I thought Terrell Harrison did a really great job moderating that, and there were other members of staff that were there too, as well, and I thought that they all had something to add. I think there was, I learned there's a little bit of a controversy between the folks that like soccer and the folks that want skateboarding there, but I, I felt like, you know, the skateboarding park is probably a, a really good move on our part. On Columbus Day, I attended the Civic Night Event at the Knights of Columbus, so it's a long tradition they've been doing for, I think, decades. It was an opportunity to honor other public officials. There didn't seem to be any appetite in the room for renaming the organization Knights of Indigenous Peoples, but in any event, everybody had a lot of fun that evening. I do have a couple of requests. I got an email, just, I think like the rest of the council probably did. There was a request to see if we would be part of an amicus brief. As I understand, the city of Huntington Beach is suing over Senate Bill 89, which, or- As I understand, the city of Huntington Beach is suing over Senate Bill 89, which, or rather, Senate Bill 9, I think it is, or maybe it's 89, that basically limits cities' abilities to, you know, when it comes to land zone, land use and zoning. My understanding is that the attorneys that worked on that one at the trial court, I think they lost at the appellate court, and they're currently petitioning the U.S. Supreme Court. So it was suggested that maybe we could be part of that for very little money. I think we should consider that, and I hope that we will, because I think that local control is important. I don't want Sacramento deciding much of what we do here when it comes to important things like land use. Given the issue of the ongoing elevator challenges that we've had at the parking structure, I am concerned about, you know, folks who are disabled being able to make use of that parking structure. It's hard to be at the, to park up on the third level and work your way down if you have issues with being ambulatory. I have noticed that, and I respect and understand that, we're having difficulties with those elevators because of vandalism, you know, availability of parts, time for inspections. But one thing I did notice is that we have a lot of city-owned vehicles on the first level. And it would seem to me that it might be worth looking into whether we might have our own policy to require that the city-owned vehicles be parked on the higher levels to free up space on the first level for those people who are disabled and wouldn't have, otherwise have access to an elevator anyway. So I'm hoping that staff can look into that. And the last thing is, I want to make a comment that I'm a little, that I'm concerned about. So, you know, on October 7th, we appropriated funds from the general fund for the police department to replace weapons with the Smith and Wesson brand weapons. And I was very happy to do that. I thought that was the right decision. I guess what concerned me is that on, at the time, I didn't realize there might have been other options for funding. Two days after our meeting, the agenda was posted with an item to accept $1.7 million of asset forfeiture funds. And it was later removed, so it's not on tonight's agenda. But I do note that as recently as one week ago, that the county board supervisors used asset forfeiture funds to address the same issue of replacing weapons for the sheriff. And I guess what I'm simply saying is, you know, it may not have changed my decision in any way. I'm a big supporter of the police, but I would have appreciated knowing at the time that we had our last council meeting that perhaps using these funds would have been an option rather than having to go to our general fund in order to pay for these. So like I said, I don't know if I would have a different decision. I don't think I would, but I think there's a certain level of candor, I guess, that I would expect as far as what all the options are on the table. And it just seems to me that if, if two days later we're posting a report that said that this other source of funds was available, I would have liked to have known that at the council meeting. And that's all my comments. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And without getting into extended discussion, Chief Benitez, I believe the asset forfeiture fund item that was pulled from tonight's agenda will be coming back in the near future. Is that correct?
Good evening, Mayor, Councilperson Jason Benitez. Police chief, the answer to that is yes. And I can tell the council the reason why it was pulled was that the funding source, that money that was in that asset forfeiture appropriation, we had already earmarked a critical need that would have occupied that to keep something viable for some time, and that we're currently in negotiations between vendors, looking for the best price, and those negotiations have not yet concluded. So it's safe to say that that money has a very critical need, but I would prefer to bring that back to the council when we had our numbers precise.
Thank you very much. And we'll have that in the staff report, I'm sure. Okay. Councilwoman Rodriguez.
Okay. I also attended the League of Cities three-day training on October 8th, 9th, and 10th, and it was a wealth of information, really good information, disaster and recovery preparedness. There was presentations on plastics. We had excellent keynote speakers. Crystal Washington from Texas, who's very innovative and cutting-edge. And Erin Brockovich was actually a closing speaker, which I was very impressed by, just her resilience and her story of making changes to protect the public health of a community. So, but the best part, I think, of the League of Cities is working with other elected officials who are either in the same journey or are a lot more seasoned than some of us, just how they deal when, when different funding sources change, right? And how they've learned from any decisions that they've made. And so that's been a great opportunity for us to, to share. So that took place in Long Beach. I was the delegate that was representing the city of Oxnard, but there were no resolutions this time around proposed by League of Cities or any of the cities. But overall, I brought back some information, and I'm happy to share with folks as needed. I just want to remind folks that I am still having my office hours. November 1st is my next office hour, which is a week from this Saturday. And I welcome folks to come and chat with the councilwoman. So I want to hear it all, the good, the bad, and the ugly. I actually happened to be at the Oxnard Public Library when we had the great shakeout on 1016, at 1016. And the staff there did an amazing job. And I think fire was actually having a training in one of the rooms there. So everybody did a great job, and I'm glad that folks participated, both civilians and all staff took the drill very seriously. So I was happy to be part of that. It was not intentional. I just happened to be there trying to finish a paper. And I joined the mayor, actually, I don't remember the date, but Sesa Chavez Elementary School walked down the street and came to our library and had workshops about government, how the city works, and what changes they could make as third graders. And they came in here in city chambers, so I was able to come and address those kids as well. So that was quite a treat, and I want to thank those teachers who are very bold to probably walk with like 40-plus kids from Sesa Chavez Elementary School down to, to city chambers. What else? I know downtown had their Day of the Dead celebration, hosted, co-hosted by Pippi DiPaolo, and I hope to attend the one at the OPAC this upcoming Saturday. And so that's taking place on October 24th, but the one that took place already was on the 11th. I believe it was the same date as the pack house at Cal State Channel Island, so I couldn't be at two places at once. Dia de los Muertos is coming up at the OPAC on October 24th. Just want to make a quick plug, and hopefully I'll see you all there. And at Oxnard College on October 30th. So see you then. Thanks.
Thank you very much. I'll just share that when my youngest daughter was in third grade, she also did the visit to council chambers and the library, and they had Public Works Day that day as well. Well, the staff was quizzing the kids, oh, what's the name of the mayor of Oxnard? And she's the only one that knew John Zerigosa. And so, and I think she won like a little prize or something because she knew that. So she was kind of a ringer, I think. All right. So I actually had the pleasure of attending the River Park Neighborhood Council with the presenter, main presenter being Supervisor LeVere. And I appreciate the Neighborhood Council and Supervisor LeVere in his office for coordinating that update for the, the community. And Mr. Miller from Special Districts is there as well and had some really great updates on the fountain and some other special district-specific items that were, are always on the minds of the residents of River Park. Also attended the Sierra Linda Neighborhood Council meeting where our city manager presented, and we had a number of staff there and some really good discussion. And the Carriage Square Neighborhood Council meeting as well, where they continued discussions there on some initiatives they're working on. A big one that just passed was their bulky item collection day, which is just this past Saturday. And this Thursday, I will be at Orchard Park Neighborhood Council at the request of their chair for a presentation just on an update on things that are happening within the city of Oxnard. And so those are my neighborhood councils. I do want to thank the speakers who spoke this evening and the comments. I'm taking notes. I know other councilmembers are as well. As it pertains to the incident from last week, as was mentioned, a meeting with stakeholders that the mayor has convened did get an update on that, and I will ask for the police chief, as they continue internal discussions on that, to look at how that can be a public-facing update in the near future as well, if that were appropriate. I know there are some moving parts behind the scenes on that as well, especially as it pertains to the federal side of things. But I appreciate your commanders, Commander Fernandez and Commander Serrato for coming out and having that open dialogue with the immigration services stakeholders. And lastly, just regarding the request by a speaker to send a video and then just have the video played in their absence, I, I actually appreciate the content of what was being sent forward, and the hard copies we have here lays that out. If anyone from the public would like to see those, they are here now, and they will be entered into the record for people to review. I think it's an important topic. I liken it to an analog version of if I just wrote a letter to the clerk and said, "I'm not going to be there tonight. Please have this read during the public comments for items not on the agenda." Well, I mean, is that, is that fair? Is that equitable for people who are there or took the time to be on Zoom? And what does this stop 10 people from doing the same thing, writing 10 letters, sending them saying, "I'm not going to be there. Please read this," or 10 people sending 10 videos, different videos, saying, "I'm not going to be there. Please show these videos." Where does it end? The example of, well, if 10 people showed up and want to show a video on Zoom, I mean, is that any different? It is different because they're here. They're here to say, "I would like to speak, and I'd like to show this video," at minimum. And I am someone who did have a video showed prior to being on the council, and I was there on Zoom, and I said, "I'd like to have this video showed. Please, Madam Clerk, show it." They showed it. That was the end of the comment. So again, the, the points that were brought up in the comment were important. I hope that he'll consider making them at the next meeting. And again, I appreciate them being submitted to the clerk so that this council can review them and the public can review them. Okay. So now we are going to move into an item from the City Clerk's Department, Subject 2026 Regular Meeting Schedule for Legislative Bodies. The recommendation that the city councils, Community Development Commission, Successor Agency, Financing Authority, and Housing Authority adopt the proposed regular meeting dates for the calendar year 2026. This item did not originate in committee. And Madam Clerk, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Good evening, Mayor Protem and councilmembers. Before you is the 2026 Proposed Regular Meeting Dates for the Calendar Year 2026. The schedule results in 24 city council meetings and 22 meetings of the city council committee. The Tuesdays on which the council will not meet are June 2nd. We have a statewide primary election. In the month of August, we will be dark. On November 3rd, that's Election Day. And then on December 29th, that's the day before the holidays. And that concludes my report. I'm available to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions of the clerk? Did you all mark your calendars? Okay.
Nobody wants to add a meeting?
And we do have the ability to add special meetings as, as needed, as appropriate, correct, Madam Clerk?
Yes, that is correct, Mayor Protem.
Thank you very much. Okay. Do we have any speakers on this item?
And Mayor Protem and councilmembers, we do not have any public speakers for this item. Thank you.
Okay. There are no additional speakers. Are there any comments before we entertain a motion? Okay. What's the pleasure of the council on this?
I move to approve the calendar as shared by your clerk.
A second.
Okay. We have a motion by Councilwoman Rodriguez and a second by Councilmember Starr. Madam Clerk, may we have the vote?
Councilwoman Basua? Thank you. Councilmember Perlo?
Yes.
Councilwoman Perez?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilmember Starr?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Teran?
Yes.
And this motion carries six to zero. Thank you.
Thank you very much. There are no further comments. Do we have, what is the pleasure of the Oxnard Housing Authority, Community Development Commission, Successor Agency, and Financing Authority?
I will second that motion.
We have a motion by Commissioner Andrade and a second by Councilwoman Rodriguez. If there are no comments, can we take the vote?
Commissioner Andrade? Commissioner Perez?
Yes.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yes.
Commissioner Starr?
Yes.
Commissioner Basua? Commissioner Perlo?
Yes.
Commissioner Teran?
Yes.
And this motion carries seven to zero. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And are we good with that item then, Madam Clerk? Okay.
Yes.
And I believe we have another Housing Authority item later this evening. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So hang tight. Commissioner Andrade? All right. Next item on the agenda is the review of the Information Consent Agenda. The members of the legislative body will consider whether to remove information consent agenda items for discussion later during the meeting. I checked with staff ahead of tonight's meeting and asked if there had been any questions posed regarding any info consent items. I was told there were none, but hearing that, are there any councilmembers who wish to pull consent items for discussion anyhow? Councilmember Starr?
L-2 and L-5.
L-2 and L-5? Thank you. Councilwoman Basua, any consent items to pull?
No, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. So we have L-2 and L-5 pulled for discussion. And before we go to a vote on the balance of the items, we'll go to public comments for Information Consent Agenda. At this time, a person may address the legislative body only on matters pertaining to the Information Consent Agenda. And the presiding officer shall limit public comments to three minutes. Anyone wishing to speak on the Information Consent Agenda, please come forward and fill out a speaker card, or if you're joining virtually, please press star nine to raise your hand. And I'll give folks a moment to do that. And just as a reminder, these are for all of the consent items, L-1 through L, what's, what's the last L there, folks? L-8, thank you very much. Excuse me, L-9. So all of these items, any comments on those? I'm not seeing any. Madam Clerk?
Mayor Protem and councilmembers, we do not have any public speakers on the Information and Consent Agenda, but I do have an announcement on the Information and Consent Agenda, item L-1, on page 117 of, of your packet. The background section has outdated information. Staff is requesting approval of the October 7th, 2025 city council meeting minutes, as stated in the recommendation. The minutes are consistent what was published in the agenda packet. So just for the record.
Thank you for that correction.
Thank you.
Okay. Before we move on to the pulled items, what is the pleasure of council for the balance of the consent agenda? L-1, L-3, L-4, and then L-6, excuse me, L-6 was pulled, L-7 through L-9?
Motion to approve. Second.
Mayor, I think L-3 and L-4 are receiving files, so I don't think we need to actually vote on those two.
So also, Mayor Protem, L-4 is a Housing Authority item?
Okay. So we'll take an addition of vote for that.
And L-1 includes Housing Authority minutes as well.
Okay. Thank you. So we'll do, go ahead and do another vote for those two items. Okay. So we have a motion by Councilwoman Perez and a second by Councilwoman Rodriguez. Can we do the first vote?
Councilwoman Perez?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rodriguez?
Aye.
Councilmember Starr?
Yes.
Councilwoman Basua?
Yes.
Councilmember Perlo?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Teran?
Yes.
And this motion carries six to zero.
Thank you very much. And what is the pleasure of the Housing Authority for items L-1 and L-4?
Move the recommended action on number one and number five.
Excuse me, it's L-4?
L-4. Beg your pardon. L-4.
Okay. So we have a motion by Councilmember Perlo.
Are we voting on which L-4 you said or not?
L-4.
So L-4 doesn't have, that's a receiving file, isn't it?
And you also have your minutes on L-1.
L-1 we need to have.
Okay. My apologies. So let's, so we have a motion by Councilmember Perlo. Would you like to amend that to be L-1, sir?
City Attorney, L-1 includes Housing Authority, so it needs a Housing Authority vote, correct? And I appreciated your sharing that.
Correct. I thought that was what is called for right now, right?
Yes. Thank you.
My screw-up when I said five. I screwed up.
No, no worries. No worries. That was on me as well. Okay. Did we get a second on that? We have a motion by Council. Okay. A second by Councilwoman Perez. And we will take a vote from the commissioners at this point?
Commissioner Andrade?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Basua?
Yes.
Commissioner Perlo?
Yes.
Commissioner Perez?
Yes.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Aye.
Commissioner Starr?
Yes.
Commissioner, I mean, I'm sorry, Vice Chair Teran?
Yes.
And this motion carries seven to zero. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And at this point, does that conclude the business of the housing commissioner?
That is correct, Mayor Protem.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Commissioner Andrade. Okay, so now at this point, we will circle back to item L2 first for discussion. This is Community Development Department Downtown Parking and Lou Fee Agreement with Haven Number Eight LLC Doing Business as Haven, 220 South A Street for Payment Terms. Recommendation that City Council approve and authorize the mayor to execute an agreement with Haven Number Eight LLC Doing Business as Haven, Haven, A-8600 in the amount of $100,000 for downtown in-lot parking fee payments over a one-year period. And we have Mr. Pengelly here. I'll turn it over to you, Councilmember Starr.
Yeah, this will be quick. So I just want to make sure that I understand, what would be the consequence of voting down the recommendation? I'm always interested in what the consequences are if we don't vote for something.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Protem, Council, Jeff Pengelly, Community Development Director. This is a condition for this project, $100,000 payment, and they're close to being ready to open and where they would reach the point where they have to make that payment to help this business out and to allow them to make some cash flow decisions that they need to make, opening a new business in Oxnard. This agreement allows them to space those payments out over a year. Voting no on this would just mean that they have to pay them before they open. So it could potentially create a hardship for the business.
I just want to say, I really appreciate the fact that you're working with businesses to make it easier for them to get in. There's often a lot of fees that get paid upfront before you have any revenues coming into the door, and that's a really bad situation. So I want to thank you for working with the applicant on that.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there any additional questions on item L2? Seeing, hearing, none, what is the, oh, excuse me, oh, we already done speakers, excuse me. What is the pleasure of the council?
I'll move the recommended action.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilwoman Starr and a second by Councilmember Peralo. Can we have the vote, please?
Councilwoman Rodriguez?
Aye.
Councilmember Starr?
Yes.
Councilwoman Basua?
Aye.
Councilmember Peralo?
Yes.
Councilwoman Perez?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Teran?
Yes.
And this motion carries six to zero. Thank you.
Thank you very much. For item L5, which has been pulled for discussion, we have the Police Department, subject memorandum of agreement with the Oxnard Community K-9 Foundation, an acceptance of equipment in the amount of $37,644. Recommendation that the City Council, one, approve and authorize the mayor to execute a donation agreement with the Oxnard Community K-9 Foundation, A-8599, to accept a donation of a 2021 Mercedes-Benz Sprinter Crew Van for use by the Oxnard Police Department K-9 Unit, and, two, approve and authorize the mayor to execute a memorandum of agreement, MOA, with the Oxnard Community K-9 Foundation, A-8599, relating to the city's use of the same, decided not Virginia Community, or excuse me, in committee. And Councilwoman Starr, you pulled this for discussion, so I'll turn it over to you for questions for Chief Benitez.
Thank you. I was just wondering if you could share with the public more information about the good works that the Oxnard Community K-9 Foundation is doing.
Well, I can speak to some things, and also, if you have further questions, Commander Dale McAlpine is here to answer that. The Oxnard Police Community Foundation is a 501(c)(3) organization that has been in place for some time. It promotes the K-9 Unit, but it also does things in terms of, it's actually provided a number of other vehicles to the city. And when I say that, it has been a provider of all of the vehicles that are used by the K-9 Unit. So back in, I believe it was circa 2016, the foundation gifted or donated in a similar agreement, the vehicles that are K-9 officers driving. I believe some of those vehicles are still on the road. About two years ago, they, the foundation, applied for a grant and received a $265,000 grant, which got us our Bearcat Armored Rescue Vehicle. So those are just a couple of examples of what that foundation gives back to the department, which in turn relieves some of the financial burdens on the city.
Thank you. And looking at their website, I understand that they have sponsors, including Lucy Pet Products, Raising Cane's Chicken Fingers, and Pacific Growth Post Graphics. I think we should acknowledge them, and I don't know if you're aware of any others that we should also recognize for their generosity.
We have a number of private donors, community members, that give to the foundation, and they do other things. I don't want to speak out of turn and speak on the behalf of the foundation, but they do sell K-9 dolls, they do sell gear that people can buy, which does in fact go back to the K-9 Foundation. So there are a lot of supporters for this organization.
And just so I understand, so my understanding is that after the useful life of this, after the end of the service life of this vehicle, that we're required to revert the vehicle back to the donor. I want to understand, what do we do in our records here to ensure that we're able to make sure that that donor intent is honored, that we actually return that? Is there, I don't know if we have like a fixed asset system where there's like a special flag, it's consigned to us or bailed to us, I don't know.
Yes, Commander Dale McAlpine, Oxnard Police Department's Patrol Support Division. Yes, in my position, I keep track of all the vehicles that are donated to us that we were agreed to give back upon completion of their useful life. Like, for example, Chief Benitez talked about the Tahos that we currently use. At the end of those useful life, we will return them back to them and hopefully they can make a little bit more money to add back in to buy more equipment for the K-9 Unit. So in turn, we do track it, and there's an asset disposal form that we do fill out, and a part of that, one of the dispositions, is either donation, or in this case, it would be other, return to the donor.
So there's probably like a field associated with this asset record that says who's the ultimate owner after the property is used?
Correct, yes.
Okay, that makes a lot of sense. And this may be more of a finance question. I'm just curious, how do we record this? Do we record this as a donation when we receive it, and later on, it's something else when it goes back? Or is it, are we recording, you know, are we coming up with like a fair market value for the asset? Get the CFO there, maybe he can answer.
I'm going to say, yes, we do track it internally, because we do get a list of capital assets every year that we got to test that we still have that equipment, what was the disposition, we don't. But I will defer to the expert for that...
Thank you.
Final answer.
Good evening, Javier Chagoyen Lazar, Chief Financial Officer, City of Oxnard. So when we receive those equipment, even if it's a donation, we treat them, we book as a part of the equipment, because it's a piece of equipment that is going to be used in the city.
So I'm sorry, so you're recording a credit as a donation? Is that what you're doing, or you're doing something else?
So, oh, we're talking about debit and credit, all right. So we're going to be recognizing the assets that we receive.
That's our debit, yeah.
And that's going to be our debit. And for credit, that's a contribution that we receive from the donor.
Contribution, okay. And later on, when this unwinds, when the car, vehicle goes back to the donor, you'll be crediting the asset, or you, what are you debiting at that point?
So when we recognize the equipment, it's going to, we're going to depreciate the equipment through the useful life, and then when it's time to return the asset, basically we'll have to just credit the asset, and then we'll just debit the contribution as a donation to the donor. So basically, we're just reversing.
So it'll look like a negative contribution at the end of the life, if you're debiting it, right? Or, sorry.
It wouldn't be a negative contribution, but...
Yeah, okay. We'll talk offline.
Yeah, definitely.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
You saw it here, folks, that's how the financial sausage is made. So, okay, thank you, Councilmember Starr. Are there any additional questions from our council members about this item for L5, for the K-9 contribution here? Seeing and hearing done, what is the pleasure of the council?
I move the recommended action.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Starr. Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Councilwoman Rodriguez. If there are no comments on that from the council, can we take the vote, Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Starr?
Yes.
Councilwoman Basua?
Yes.
Councilmember Peralo?
Yes.
Councilwoman Perez?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rodriguez?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Teran?
Yes.
And this motion carries six to zero. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, so now we are going to move on to a item M1. This is a time and place set for a public hearing. This is for the Community Development Department, subject Zone Text Amendment, Permit Number 25-580-01, to allow agricultural and construction vehicle sales and incidental repair and services uses in the heavy manufacturing M2 zone. Recommendation, and if any councilors need to use the restroom, this is a long recommendation, so. Recommendation that the City Council, one, conduct a public hearing, but I'm a fast reader, Councilwoman. That the City Council, one, conduct a public hearing to receive public testimony concerning the adoption of the Zone Text Amendment to Oxnard City Code, Chapter 16, Article 3, Division 11, Section 16-163, for properties located within the city of Oxnard zoned heavy manufacturing, and, two, find the Zone Text Amendment to be categorically exempt from environmental review pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA Guidelines, Section 15060(c)(2) and (3), preliminary review, and 15061(b)(3), review for exemption, and, three, approve the first reading by title only and waive further reading of the proposed ordinance titled, Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Oxnard Approving Planning and Zoning Permit Number 25-580-01, Zone Text Amendment, to amend Oxnard City Code, Chapter 16, Article 3, Division 11, Section 16-163, to include the agricultural and construction vehicle sales with incidental repair and service use as a permitted use within areas zoned heavy manufacturing M2, filed by Designated Agent Holly King Winagar, 7584 Eisenhower Street, Ventura, California 93003, on behalf of the property owner, Todd Industrial Park, 5755 Valentine Road, Suite 203, Ventura, California 93003. This is a public hearing and was reviewed by the Planning Commission. Therefore, this item did not originate in committee. Our contacts are Mr. Jeff Pengelly, Community Development Director. We'll start with the City Clerk's certification and publication and any written communications, if any. Madam City Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. There was a legal notice for this public hearing published in V the newspaper on October 2, and the City Clerk's office has received no written communications on this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Do any council members have any ex parte communications or other disclosures regarding this matter to state for the record? We'll go one at a time. We'll start with Councilwoman Basua for ex parte communications.
Aye.
Thank you. Councilwoman Starr?
None.
Thank you. Councilwoman Rodriguez?
I have not had any ex parte communication.
Thank you. Councilwoman Perez?
None.
Okay, Councilmember Peralo?
I should, none.
Yes, none, thank you. And I have none as well. Members of the public, we're invited to sign up to speak on this item on the city's website, and a person who did not sign up may do so now by submitting a speaker card or following the instructions posted on the agenda for this meeting and at the city's website, oxnard.org/city-meetings. And I'll give folks just a moment to do that. If there are any people in person who would like to submit a card or on Zoom who wish to raise their hand using star nine. Juan Carlos Torres, Associate Planner, posted a video presentation regarding this item and is available to answer any brief clarifying questions councilors may have before we take public testimony on this item. The council will deliberate after the public hearing has been closed. Do any councilors have questions at this time? Councilmember Peralo?
Any repair of the equipment there, is the equipment that's going to be repaired and operated and potentially run going to be meeting with the current air pollution control district requirements for agricultural equipment at the current date?
So, Councilmember Peralo and councilmembers, in regards to the exact equipment that would be out there, this would not regulate that equipment. They would be subject to any California state regulations in effect, but the code itself does not get into that level of detail in terms of the specifics of the equipment itself.
Is there an expectation that we should get into that level of detail?
Councilmember Peralo, for this item, I would say, no. There are other agencies that are responsible for ensuring that the equipment complies with applicable standards, so we would defer to those other agencies for those items.
And the only reason I ask, we had some members of the public speak about living near a railroad track and the issues with the types of stuff that comes off. Having been around agricultural equipment and knowing when they work on equipment, often they have to let it run to warm up, operate, see if it's working, and sometimes when the stuff is brought in, it's not the greatest of working condition. That's why I asked, and that's why I asked if there would be potential. I appreciate and thank you for your answer.
Thank you very much. Any additional questions? Councilwoman Starr?
I just, maybe it's a more of a historical question than anything else, but I'm wondering, when was the last time we've had a top-to-bottom review of our zoning ordinances and, you know, what's allowed and what's not allowed? And when, when do you expect we would revisit that again?
So, Councilwoman Starr, in regards to a complete overhaul of the ordinance, I'm not aware of when the last time that was done. I do believe there was an update to the industrial code probably around 2017, 2018, if I remember correctly. But in terms of future updates, that is something that we continue to look at. As you probably saw on the list of uses, there are quite a few uses in there. That's also in a couple of other sections of our code, so we are continuing to look at ways to kind of streamline that and update that, potentially not as a complete overhaul, but kind of tackling sections at a time, which is kind of traditional for updates to zoning codes, where you just kind of make adjustments over time to kind of keep it up to date.
So is the driver for this decision this evening, is it all based on an applicant that simply just wants to have a particular use of the property, and that's, and we said, hey, can't be done here, but we have to go to the council and get that changed? Is that what's driving this?
So, Councilwoman Starr, yes, that is correct. So the applicant submitted application requesting to have this use be allowed in the M2 zone, and so that has been brought forward to the City Council. And the applicant is also here as well, if they, or if there are any questions for them.
I just would like to say that I really appreciate that we're working to make it easier to do business in the city of Oxnard. So this type of flexibility, where it's possible, where it doesn't adversely impact the public, very much in favor of. So thank you for bringing this to us.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Councilmember. Thank you, Mr. Pearson. Are there any additional questions of staff before we move on to the applicant? Okay. The applicant will now give a presentation not to exceed 15 minutes. Once, okay, excuse me. So the applicant will give a presentation not to exceed 15 minutes, and I believe she's coming up to the podium here if you'd like to introduce yourself, and you have 15 minutes.
Thank you, Mayor. I have no presentation. I just wanted to say, my name is Holly King Winagar. I am the applicant for Todd Industrial Park, and they, they really appreciated staff time and Mr. Pearson's time and Mr. Torres's time, and all of their thoroughness and helpfulness during this process. This, as you know, this still would require a DDR when we come in further to, when we come in further for the actual project, and this allows for any future projects and more economic development in this M2 zoning that would be already allowed in the M1. So this is heavy industrial, so it already is allowed in the light industrial, so it's just allowing for further uses in the M2, which allows for greater economic development for the city of Oxnard. So we have no comments, and we are agreeing with staff on all, all requirements of the staff report.
Thank you very much, Ms. Winagar.
Do you have any questions? Do you have any questions?
Yes. Does the City Council have any questions of the applicant? Councilmember Prelo?
Thank you very much. Best of luck in the future. If it's approved, did you make any outreach to the nearest neighborhood council to make a presentation and tell them what your plans were?
No, Councilmember Prelo, but if, if that is something that the council member, council and planning commission and even the staff recommends, we can do that at the DDR review time.
Thank you for your frankness.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional questions of the applicant? Okay, seeing and hearing none. I am going to now open the public testimony portion of the public hearing. Speakers have three minutes to speak on this item. Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers for this item?
Mayor Protem and councilmembers, we do not have any public speakers in person or virtually for this item. Thank you.
Thank you very much. If there are no speakers at this time, we are going to go ahead and close the public hearing. And at this point, that portion of the public hearing is closed. Does any councilmember wish to comment? Seeing and hearing no comments, I'll entertain a motion to approve the recommended actions.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Star. Do we have a second? I will go ahead and second the motion. Madam Clerk, we have a motion by Councilwoman Star and a second by Mayor Protem Teran.
Councilwoman Basua?
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Prelo?
Yes.
Councilwoman Perez?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilmember Star?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Teran?
Yes.
And this motion carries six to zero. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is item N1. Subjects, or Information Technology Department, subject: Purchasing Authorization, Compuwave Inc. Recommendation that the City Council approve and authorize the mayor to execute a two-year blanket agreement with Compuwave in the amount of $1.2 million for the purchase of computer hardware and related services. Finance and Governance Committee approved this three to zero on September 23rd, 2025, and our Chief Information Officer, Rob Rubin, is available if we have questions. Are there any questions from council? Excuse me, councilmembers? Seeing and hearing none. Madam Clerk, do we have speakers for this item?
Mayor Protem and councilmembers, we do not have any public speakers for Report N1. Thank you.
Thank you very much. If there are no, any, excuse me, if there are not any speakers, are there any comments by the council on this item? Councilwoman Perez? Oh, no comments, excuse me.
If there's no comments, I'll move the recommended action.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Prelo?
I shall second that motion.
And a second by Councilmember Star. May we have the vote, please?
Councilmember Prelo?
Yes.
Councilwoman Perez?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilmember Star?
Yes.
Councilwoman Basua?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Teran?
Yes.
And this motion carries six to zero. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And don't go far, Mr. Rubin. Next item on the agenda is item N2. Information Technology Department, subject: Purchasing Authorization, Insight Public Sector, Inc. Recommendation that the City Council approve and authorize the mayor to extend blanket agreement number 32400174 with Insight Public Sector, Inc. for the purchase of computer networking technology through April 30th, 2028, and increase the funding amount to $1.4 million for a new total not to exceed amount of $4.035 million. Finance and Governance Committee approved three to zero on September 23rd, 2025, and Mr. Rob Rubin, the Chief Information Officer, is here. Do we have any questions by councilmembers? Seeing and hearing none. Madam Clerk, do we have speakers for this item?
Mayor Protem and councilmembers, we do not have any public speakers in person or virtually for Report N2. Thank you.
Thank you. If there are no speakers, are there any comments by councilmembers? Councilwoman Rodriguez?
I was in the Finance and Governance Committee, and this item and the one previous to this really goes hand in hand, and I just wanted to share, thank you for your presentation and your thorough explanations in the committee and in the presentation. But I, I'm glad that the city of Oxnard is investing in both the hardware and the software that we need to, you know, be in a better place, just as, as a city as a whole, and provide the tools that we need for our staff.
Thank you very much. Any additional questions or comments? Excuse me.
Just, just a general comment.
Councilwoman Star?
I, I just wanted to, and I've said this to you before, I just think you're doing stellar work. I really appreciate what you're doing, and your reports are always clear. And even sometimes when I ask hard questions, you're able to answer them really, really easily. So, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I have a question. Did you, have you changed over to Windows 11 already, Mr. Rubin? I'm kidding.
In fact, yes, all the city staff has completely changed over to Windows 11.
Thank you.
That was quite a, quite a, quite an effort. Sorry, I didn't introduce myself. Rob Rubin, CIO for the city of Oxnard.
Yes.
Good evening.
Thank you. It was, I was just kidding, but thank you for that update. Okay. At this point, then, what is the pleasure of the council?
I'll move the recommended action.
We have a motion by Councilmember Star and a second by Councilwoman Perez. May we have the vote, Madam Clerk?
Councilwoman Perez?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rodriguez?
Aye.
Councilmember Star?
Yes.
Councilwoman Basua?
Yes.
Councilmember Prelo?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Teran?
Yes.
And this motion carries six to zero. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Rubin. Next item on the agenda is item N3. Public Works Department, subject: Agreement 32600054 with Badger, excuse me, Badger Meter, Inc. for Beacon Software as a Service. Recommendation that the City Council approve and authorize the mayor to execute an agreement with Badger Meter, Inc. in the amount not to exceed $1,627,436.40 for a five-year term from November 1st, 2025, to October 31st, 2030, for Beacon Software as a Service Cellular Service Unit. This item did not originate in committee because it is a continuation of a previous item approved by the City Council on October 19th, 2021. Our contact is Mr. Michael Wolfe, Public Works Director. And we have Mr. Beeman here as well. Are there any questions by councilmembers for our staff? Any questions, Councilwoman Basua? Nope, okay. Seeing and hearing none. Madam Clerk, do we have speakers for this item?
Mayor Protem and councilmembers, we do not have any public speakers in person or virtually for Report N3. Thank you.
Thank you very much. If there are no speakers, are there any comments by councilmembers? Seeing, or seeing and hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll second that motion.
We have a, a motion by Councilwoman Perez and a second by Councilwoman Rodriguez. May we have the vote, Madam Clerk?
Councilwoman Rodriguez?
Aye.
Councilmember Star?
Yes.
Councilwoman Basua?
Yes.
Councilmember Prelo?
Yes.
Councilwoman Perez?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Teran?
Yes.
And this motion carries six to zero. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Beeman. The next item on the agenda is item N4. Public Works Department, subject: Golf Operations Year-end Final Report and Fiscal Year 2024-25 Budget Appropriations. Recommendation that the City Council approve and authorize an appropriation in an amount up to $280,838 for additional fiscal year 24-25 expenses from the Golf Course Operating Fund 651. This item did not originate in committee since it is a continuation from, of a previous item approved by the City Council on December 17th, 2024, and contact is Mr. Michael Wolfe, Public Works Director, and we have Mr. Steve Howlett, our Assistant Public Works Director, here for questions. Do we have questions of councilmembers for Mr. Howlett or Mr. Wolfe? Councilwoman Star?
Yeah, I was wondering if you could, I know we had some unanticipated expense concerning the replacement of the irrigation control system, roughly $723,000. It was due to a power surge from Southern California Edison, while I guess SCE was performing repairs in the area. And SCE denied our claim for damages, so it sounds like we're going to be on the hook for all of this. Can you tell me, can you elaborate a little bit more on why they did that? I know they said it was an old irrigation system, but I would think there'd be some sort of value that we'd get from them.
Mayor Protem and councilmembers, in response to Councilmember Star, yes, I was the one who submitted the claim to SCE. Just a little background on what happened. SCE was doing, performing work in the area, and so they shut off the system. Usually, when they recharge a system, they'll give us notice so we can turn off computers and anything else that we have going on or isolate through a switchgear. In this case, they did not. Staff became aware fairly quickly when all the computers in the maintenance shop were completely fried, one of those being the irrigation computer. Then they went out into the field and saw that all the field clocks were also fried. So, a surge went through the system, did some extensive damage. We did contact our liaison with SCE early that day, I believe, to let her know that as we move forward, we will be submitting a claim for this and be tracking our costs. So, we did move forward with the replacement of the irrigation control system. As we got those costs, I, I kept them informed of where the costs were, and then I submitted the claim with the costs. And then they came back and asked us how old the irrigation system is. Well, that irrigation system is original to the golf course, so there was no upgrades or improvement. So, in the minds of SCE, they figured that the irrigation system was fully depreciated for its life cycle and therefore had no value to replace. But I argued back. I, I did contact the, the, the person who sent us the claim and said, if it had no value to it, then why did it cost us $723,000 to replace it? So, she said that was just the position of SCE, and, and I left it at that, so.
So, kind of, as a follow-up question, you know, Southern California Edison, I think, made a big mistake here, and they should have provided us some compensation for that. My question is, they're, they've made mistakes in the past. They're going to make mistakes in the future. So, what, what prophylactic are we putting in there to prevent a similar problem from happening in, in the future when, the next time Southern California Edison does something like this?
Well, Councilmember Star, what I can say is, recently, we've been having some unusual elevator activity at the 300 Building, and this is because of, what they call it, dirty power. We get unusual power surges in the system, and our, the computers for the elevator, when they get the fluctuation, they go back into default or emergency mode because they don't know what's going on, but something's wrong with the electricity. So, the elevators will go into a default mode where they will just go up and down and open and close on each floor. That way, if there's anybody on there, they can, they'll have to stop at every floor on the way down or the way up, but that's how the elevator goes into that default mode. And so, we'd have to have the elevator contractor come back out, reset it. It happened again. Came back another time, reset it, happened again. So, we were in communication with SCE about that as well. And we're going to continue having those discussions about the outages that we're having in the downtown area.
So, is there something like power surge protectors or something like that we could, we could use? And what, what, how do we protect ourselves?
This last time, our electrical contractor, oil field, did make some changes to our supply for the power and hopes that this will remediate that problem from occurring.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Star. Thank you, Mr. Howlett. Any additional questions for Mr. Howlett regarding the golf course item? Mr., Councilwoman Prelo?
As a city's representative for Clean Power Alliance, you get to hear some of the interaction between Southern California Edison and the other thing. I am extremely grateful that you explained what happened, and I'm extremely grateful you explained the response when they gave you, well, if the equipment in the field has passed its useful life, why did it cost you X amount of dollars? The reason I'm taking the time to say this, I do read the newspaper on occasion, and I watch what's happening in Los Angeles with Southern California Edison accepting very little responsibility for fires. And as long as they can roll over people, it seems that if they can roll over an individual, they roll them over. And how much can an individual afford to take on Southern California Edison, of which they are also paying their fees to Southern California Edison? I'm thankful to my Public Works for standing up like that, and I would hope, I would hope that if there's anything that we are owed, we go after every nickel and dime we're owed. I know there's a cost incurred, but I don't want the city of Oxnard to get a reputation they can roll us over. And I hope I would have unanimous support by the council on that matter. Thank you for the information you've shared.
Thank you, Councilmember Prelo. Any additional questions? At this point, Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers for this item?
Mayor Protem and councilmembers, we do not have any public speakers in person or virtually for Report N4. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Star?
Yeah, I, I do have one, one other question. So, if this power surge had not happened, do you have any sort of ballpark feel as far as how long we could have kept using that irrigation control system? Do you think it had several more years of life in it? Do you think it had several more years of life in it or was it coming? Yeah, I mean, you're, just your opinion, I don't.
Councilmembers, it's, it's hard to say. It, it is true that it had reached the end of its useful life. So that was one of the items we did have on our prioritized list for capital improvements. Just the power surge moved it up to the number one position. So current, we, we have a couple other large projects going on right now. Just like to mention quickly, we are replacing the roof for the clubhouse, and we're also moving forward with the plans for repaving the parking lot. So those are two big capital improvements that were ahead of the irrigation system, but because of the surge, that became the number one.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. If there are no additional comments on this, I'll just say, Mr. Howlett, I know I probably say this each time the golf course comes up as an agenda item, but I, I am not a golfer myself, but I am thoroughly impressed with the performance of the operator and of staff in managing it, considering it was not that long ago in this organization's memory that this golf course is operating in the red. And now we have the ability to have the operator thankful to them for absorbing some of these extra costs that came onboard. And now we have this appropriation that's being asked for here. But the fact that this operation is able to do that and that we can move forward with a, an operation that is still in the black and looks like it will continue to do so, I commend staff and the operator for that. So thank you again.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I'd like to take this opportunity just to, to bring up the fact that the operator, I did receive complaints about the operator complaining about the condition of the golf course. And I would explain to them that what happened was not the fault of the operator, regardless of who was managing the golf course, it would have happened to that management company. So thank you for acknowledging that. They did take a little bit of heat, and I fielded a lot of complaints about the conditions of the course while the irrigation system was down. But again, it had nothing to do with the golf course operator. It was whoever was managing the course at the time would have had to deal with the same problem.
Yeah, I'll push back a little on that because if Edison was operating the golf course, I don't know if, I think they would have reimbursed themselves on this, but that's just my opinion. Mr. City Manager, do you have something to add?
Just very quickly, it's also, with regard to the irrigation systems, also somewhat dependent on gophers and golfers. I once was a very bad golfer who would occasionally not move the ball far enough away from the sprinkler head.
Mayor Protem.
Yes, councilwoman Star.
I was just ready to move the recommended action unless.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Excuse me, we have a motion by councilwoman Star and a second by councilmember Perlo. May we have the vote, madam clerk?
Councilman Star.
Yes.
Councilwoman Basula.
Yes.
Councilmember Perlo. Councilwoman Betis.
Yes.
Councilwoman Rodriguez.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Teran.
Yes.
And this motion carries six to zero. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Howlett. Okay, we move on to our final agenda item for the evening. The next item is N5. Public Works Department, subject public, public project agreement 32600135 with GSE Construction Company, Inc., for secondary sedimentation tank mechanical equipment replacement phase two, specification number PW25-134. Recommendation that the city council approve and authorize, one, a total of $2,995,711 in project funds for the secondary sedimentation tank mechanical equipment replacement phase two, specification number PW25-134. Two, the mayor to execute an agreement with GSE Construction Company, Inc., in the amount of $2,496,425 for the project and approve a project contingency, contingency amount of $249,643, about 10% with GSE Construction Company, Inc., for a total not to exceed value of $2,746,068 for the project. And three, a project allocation amount of $249,643, about 10% for engineering, inspection, survey, and project management for this project. The item did not originate in committee as this is a capital improvement project specifically listed in the city's capital improvement program budget, which is previously approved by the city council. Contact is Michael Wolf, Public Works Director, and we have Mr. Beeman here for questions. Are there questions from councilmembers of staff? Councilmember Perlo.
One question. If any of the material is removed or, say, crushed, is it treated as hazardous material because of the environment it's been in, or is it allowed to simply be reused as construction material?
So for the mechanical, I apologize. Good evening, city council. Tim Beeman, Assistant Director of Public Works. So for the, this is only strictly the mechanical equipment. So any materials, we're moving everything that was metal to composite materials because we do have issues with rust in the harsh environment. So anything that's metal can be removed and recycled, and then all the plastic material can actually just be disposed of. So this is purely the mechanical equipment. There's no structural debris that, that's made up of this. So it can, it can be disposed as. Thank you very much. Thank you, councilmember Perlo. Councilwoman Star.
Yeah, just for the benefit of the public, I mean, I'm, I'm not an engineer, but could you explain to the public, what does a secondary sedimentation tank mechanical equipment does?
Basically, the entire process of the wastewater treatment plant is separating the liquids from the solids. And so different parts in the plant, you slow down the flow, and that allows anything that floats to come to the top, and then everything that's heavier to settle down. And so on, in the pictures in the presentation, you can see that there's large baffles that move along. So the ones that come along the top, push them up to one area, and then at that spot, we have a pipe that's perforated and it's operated back and forth. That allows anything that floats to go in there. That goes through their waste activated sludge, sorry, without getting too technical. And everything that's lower gets pushed out along the outside, and that goes to return activated sludge. So that puts the clear water that goes through, it, it does go through a set of weirs, and this is the final steps before it's chlorinated and put into the outfall. Thank you, councilmember. And in case the public's wondering, there are pictures in the presentation, but they are not at all graphic, so. Councilmember Perlo.
When you use the term clear water, you're still talking about wastewater.
It is wastewater, yes, sir. Thank you very much. Not yet. Madam Clerk, do we have speakers for this item?
Mayor Protem and councilmembers, we do not have any public speakers in person or virtually for this item. Thank you.
Thank you very much. If there are no speakers, do any councilmembers have comments? Seeing and hearing none, what is the pleasure of the council?
I'll move the recommended action, and I appreciate all the work that's going on. As when I first got on this council and found out the state of our wastewater facility, it's come a long way, a long way.
I'll, I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion by councilmember Perlo, a second by councilmember Star. May we have the vote, madam clerk?
Councilwoman Basula.
Yes.
Councilmember Perlo.
Yes.
Councilwoman Betis.
Yes.
Councilwoman Rodriguez.
Aye.
Councilmember Star.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Teran.
Yes.
And the motion carries six to zero. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Beeman. There being no further business on the agenda, before we adjourn, it's been a pleasure to be here in the mayor's absence. Thank you all very much. And I will just say that my daughter watched the previous meeting, and she said that my